Good evening, good folks, and welcome to the City of Meskegan City Commission Work Session/General Session. This is a joint meeting this evening considering tomorrow, Tuesday, November 11th is Veterans Day, a federal holiday, so we will not be meeting tomorrow. Before we get on with our business, I remind folks that we will have a few different public comment periods this evening, a couple of hearings, as well as public comment on agenda items. That will be towards the beginning of the meeting, and then we have general public comment at the end of the meeting, in which folks can share whatever they'd like with the City Commission, up to three minutes. Everyone has up to three minutes for each of those public comment periods. If you are going to be giving comment in person, I encourage you to complete a public comment form at the back of the room. Please provide your name and home address. No doubt I will not be sharing your home address or asking you to announce your home address. That's for our records, but I will be acknowledging if you're a City of Meskegan resident, which neighborhood you're joining us from, and if you're not a City of Meskegan resident, which other township, village, or city you're joining us from. We do have phone-in comments as well, so when we get to that time period, we'll announce it, and there'll be a phone number scrolling at the bottom of the screen as well. I'm going to give you that phone number now, just so you have it at the ready, but do not call in just yet. That number is (231) 724-6721. Again, that's just for when we get to phone-in public comment. Now, we don't have a faith leader to lead us in prayer this evening, so we'll just have a moment of silence, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you wish to join us in either of those activities, I ask that you stand if you're still capable of doing so.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we roll call, please?
Commissioner Kilgo?
Here.
Commissioner Keener?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Just absent.
Commissioner Gorman?
Here.
Commissioner Cochran?
Here.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Thank you. And first up for Honors and Worthen Presentations, we'll have a presentation from Melissa Howell of the Meskegan County Department of Health and Human Services regarding foster parents. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Melissa Howell. I work in foster home licensing in Meskegan County, the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm here tonight to discuss our need to find and recruit foster parents. There are approximately 350 children in foster care within Meskegan County at any given time. We currently have roughly 150 foster homes between seven different licensing agencies to assist us with placement for children who come into foster care. In addition to placing Meskegan children, MDHHS receives on average anywhere from 25 to 45 emails from various counties in Michigan each day, expressing a placement need for a child in foster care in their county. There is something many of you can do to help address this critical need. I am hoping to connect with local businesses to provide some literature about getting in touch with a licensing specialist to learn more about becoming a foster parent. Please let me know if I can drop off information to your business for distribution. I can be reached at (231) 288-2188, or my email is howellm2@michigan.gov. That's H-O-W-E-L-L, the letter M, the number 2, at michigan.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Work Session Item. This is for presentation and discussion. You'll notice that we do also have this on our consent agenda for potential action item, pending the commission's decision following our discussion and presentation.
Good evening. Tim Coles, Public Safety Director. As you said, this will be on the consent. I have Ashley May, our parking manager, also here with us. We're just going to go over the past year and our parking enforcement, specifically in each area. Our intent in the consent is to talk about possible options that we could have for our upcoming, within the next month, as far as issuance of season passes, so... Our point to go over. Ready. Just to give you a quick snapshot of our total revenue. And as we go, if there's just questions for myself or Ashley, just please ask. If I'm missing something, I'm certain that she'll give me a hand here. So you look at the 224 revenue as opposed to the 225 revenue. Remember, we went from $20 to $40 for a season pass this past year. I'm certain there's going to be a lot of questions. You look at the numbers there. Yes, our revenue is up, but our passes are considerably down for the year. Talk a little bit more about that as we go in the presentation. This revenue comparison, a little bit more on the daily revenue, less on our seasonal revenue. Total revenue is up for 225, 2025, I'm sorry. Talk a little bit about our buy-one-get-one. Last year, we did a buy-one-get-one for our seasonal passes. So that'd be from, I think it's December through January of '25.
Yeah, it was December 10th through January 16th.
The total revenue on that was a little over $55,000. Total amount of BOGOs sold was 1,397 for a total of 2,794 passes. I had Ashley take a look at our year before that during that same time period for the initial sales, and just to give us a little bit of a snapshot, if you would go into that 2024 passes.
Yeah, so we sold in that same window of time, the December 10th through January 16th, from '24 to '25, we sold 102 passes, equalling $2,040 in revenue.
Showing there was considerably more revenue doing it that way, but it might have also contributed to our less sales of overall seasonal passes. Any questions so far on revenue? And passes sold, seasonal?
Yeah, in the first slide, when you had the number of seasonal passes sold for this last year, that's a reflection of actual sales, not like passes issued. So like, since we, in BOGO, we paid for one, but they got two, so that's only reflecting one, not both of them being, passes being issued
Correct.
Under the number of 69,150?
Yep.
And also does not include the...
Or 7,824 for seasonal, yeah, 7,824.
And if I'm correct, it does not also include our resident passes?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep, that's just purchased passes.
But if a resident came in and bought in addition to the free ones, that would be counted out in here?
That is included in that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Of course.
Questions on revenue numbers before I move on? One of the things that I'll comment on, we could, I asked her, I says, "What is your reasoning? What is your thoughts for the difference between year to year?" Because that's considerable, over half, it looks like, that we sold, even though we have that uptick in revenue. There's a lot of things that come into play hypothetically. I mean, some things that Ashley's been thinking about, since this is what she hears every day, is that people will come in and pay the $30 fine, even though they could be paying the $40 for the season passes, to get a ticket. So they'd much rather just save that $10, that she hears a lot of that about. She's also heard a lot over this past year about the consternation about having the tickets, or, I'm sorry, the seasonal passes go up to $40 from $20, so we might have a decline in the purchase of our seasonal passes because of that. We also noticed, let me go over the avoided tickets and the difference between the two years.
So for 2024, our total amount of voided tickets in the timeframe of beach parking, which unfortunately, I don't have a report where I can pull out exactly which ones were avoided specifically for beach parking, but the total number of voided tickets in 2024 was 1,420, whereas in '25, it was 705. And the very large majority of citations issued by parking officers in that timeframe is no beach pass citations. So even though we don't have anything to definitively say each one of those were for beach parking, the majority of those are going to, most likely going to be, have been voided for the replacement of a beach pass.
Always give that option if they come up here to pay before the, both times, before and after the price. Like, they could get a seasonal pass, and then we avoid the ticket. That was always an option, and always still is an option. Of course, we also do void tickets if there is a situation where our parking enforcement, if somebody goes up to the kiosk, or right there, there's just, we'll void tickets in those instances too. One other thing just to think about, total amount of beach citations for 2024 was 5,205. Total amount of beach citations for 2000, I think I said 2024. For 2025, total amount of beach citations, 3,155. So, over 2,000 tickets less between the two years. To me, it sort of coincides with the amount of passes that we sold, the amount of daily and seasonal passes that we sold. We have less people out at the beach, hard known without maybe doing a place where on it, but those probably are correlated with the amount of tickets issued to the amount of passes sold.
So just to confirm, 5,205 citations issued for traffic enforcement in the Pier Marquette area, or where we have beach parking program at, in 2024, and then in 2025, that was down to 3,155?
Correct.
Yeah, and those passes are specifically no beach pass citations. They didn't include any other, just for not having a beach pass.
Okay, so if they parked in the wrong spot, that's not counted, this is specifically maybe?
Correct.
All right. We launched the T2 Parking. This is something that was budgeted, that we talked about at a work session. This is to try to streamline our process. This is to get us into a plate reader system, so that people can get their passes, go online, buy the passes, input their plate, and it's automatically in the system. This is a system that doesn't necessarily, you need to give them a sticker anymore, you know, for the year. They can still request for it, but this allows for that option. One of the things that we were, during our parking committee meeting, is what can we do differently this year? We had the buy-one-get-one last year. What can we do differently this year to attract our residents and our visitors to our website to try to get them to buy their passes online? Because then now it's in the system, like, plate's in the system right now. One of the things we discussed is a possible discount of having a $4 off of a seasonal pass, which is just pretty much covering that processing fee. And that processing fee is something that we've had for credit card processing all along, from '21 through '22. So this is one of the options that we're presenting outside of doing a buy-one-get-one for the year, for us to discuss. This will offset that processing fee and will encourage that online adoption. We believe, and Ashley believes, that this will also encourage more parking, seasonal and daily passes purchased online. We also have changed our systems, or will be changing our systems, in the kiosk, and if you'll comment on that, Ashley, were we going to do an upgrade?
Yeah, so our kiosk that we have now will need an upgrade to accommodate the pay-by-plate system. Right now, the kiosks are touchscreen and don't have keyboards for people to be able to punch in their license plate numbers. So those will be upgraded. Along with that, there is a software update that has to come with that. And then also, we are going to be upgrading each kiosk from, right now, they have modems that can accommodate, they can accommodate networks from T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T. And we found through a lot of error this past season that the only network that really works efficiently, or mostly efficiently in our kiosk, is the Verizon network. So we are going to upgrade, we have about five of them that have Verizon only right now, and they are our most functioning kiosk, or our best functioning kiosk. So we are going to upgrade all of them to that, just the Verizon processing.
And that will be undertaking, so all of them will have that new Verizon card in them, so hopefully we'll get some less complaints to the parking, and people will get their parking passes, or their information in there, and get their car registered quicker. And they'll be able to do the car system also, to get their car registered. There's also going to be an opportunity for them to go online to the website to be able to register. We decided on this rather than having the app, because we, imagine being out at the beach. I now get to download the app, I'm going to wait for now the app to download, and now I need to then go and input the information, so there's that time. Let's go direct to the site, get your information inputted, get your car registered, start enjoying our beach. Talk a little bit about the new website portal?
Yeah, so the top image is the portal that patrons will see when they first log into our website. It's kind of tiny, but you can see on the left side, there is a pay tickets option, and then a view permits option. So they'll be able to do either one. At the bottom, that's, after you click the permits option, this is what you see right now, because I'm working on inputting each of the permits that we will have in this upcoming season. But this is an idea of what it'll be. So our residents will be able to request their beach parking passes, as well as purchasing either daily or seasonal passes. And one really good thing is, I feel like the majority of our beachgoers are tourists, and if it's somebody that's planning their trip in advance, they can actually purchase a daily pass for the specific day that they'll be here, however far in advance they'd like to. So if there's somebody that likes to have everything paid for before they actually take their trip, that will benefit them as well.
Other options that we're working on, I talked to Ashley last week, is what happens if someone wants to purchase this as a gift for somebody, or purchase something additional. We're working on how that can be implemented. T2 system is very adaptive, that we can do pretty much anything we want within this system online, so we're just working with the company to get that also added on there. Those options, if there's other options that come up as we go, because we're still learning, we'll try to put those into the system. What we have right now for you, we're looking right now at that option of possibly having that discount rate for the seasonal pass and the daily pass, if they go online. And if there's any other discussion you want to talk about for the upcoming season. We want to try to do that pretty soon. We did it last year in December, so that we have that as possible gifts, you know, for the holiday season.
You just mentioned that, and I heard it, but I was reading at the same time. Can you, can you share again with regard to potential gifting, how that would work? If someone wants to buy a pass as a stocking stuffer for someone?
That question came up to me, I can't remember who proposed it to me, but somebody did. And I talked to Ashley about it, and it was something that she's approached T2 to see how we can put that right on the portal. She believes that it should be no problem.
Okay, something that they can print out or email to their city?
Yeah, so in the past years, we've had, we've just kind of made little makeshift, like, gift cards that we printed on our computers and provided to people who were coming in to make that purchase, that they could put in a stocking or a card, or something along those lines, if they didn't actually want the physical beach. Some of them didn't want to be responsible for the sticker, so that's how we associated that. We will still do that going forward for anybody that wants to do it in person. I am working with our builders on our website right now to, it's not something that they've had in the past, so they have assigned somebody to build that for us on our portal, to where they can, it's kind of similar to like, if you were to buy, like, DoorDash for somebody, you know, they would get a text message that says, "You received a gift, it's on the way," or something. It'll be something similar to that, where they'll get an e-gift card, where they could then click the link, and then go and put their information in to have that license plate assigned to that beach.
The things that we're also hopeful to do after this year is, after these new Verizon cards are installed, and you got, if you recall, we have a Verizon on the tower out there, so we hope with that combination will really help us out with our connectivity. We're going to analyze, do we really need to have this many kiosks out there? So we're going to look at that as the year goes on, that we might wind up moving some and/or taking some away, because every kiosk is a cost, of course, upkeep. But then what we would do is, if we do remove four or five, we'll keep those so that we can then utilize those to replace when things go down. Because right now, we do a lot of the actual work at the actual kiosk ourselves.
Yeah, I'm really excited about the process of people being able to buy digital passes and having them connected to their license plate, something that we've wanted to realize since launching the paid parking program back in 2020. So I'm so happy that we're finally in a position to do that. That's really exciting, and it's going to be a convenience for guests to our community and our own residents, if they need to purchase additionally. Or maybe they forgot their pass, or couldn't find their pass, so they need to just pay for the day. And it's going to be good for staff too, you know, less taxing on staff in terms of being inundated with people needing to come in and buy the physical passes. So it should help streamline operations and make things convenient for everybody, and hopefully generate some greater revenue in the process. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Kilgo?
Thank you. Chief here, it says, just little semantics things, not everybody's great with technology, but I know that if I was terrible with technology, I'd get someone to help me if I could save a few dollars. But here it says view permits. Is there any way to change that wording to say like, passes options, or options for pass? Just because somebody might log on and be like, "Okay, I didn't see where I could get my permit." Because, or where I could get my pass, because it says permits, and just little things like that. That's one thing that I noticed. The second thing is, why $4? Why not $5, or maybe more? And I just ask because you had mentioned that when some of the people came in, and they were, their complaint was our new price, which I understand, and that we might have lost some visitors to our beach this year, because I know some people said, "I'm not buying a pass," and they probably ended up buying a pass at some point in time last year, but there probably are some people who just didn't buy a pass at all last year. And if we have that option to save a few dollars, maybe it's $4, but I'm just curious why we said on that number?
Our parking committee meetings, we were trying to think of the right place to land on that, and we were thinking 10%. That's the only reason why we were to present to the commission to have parts of conversation on right now.
Gotcha.
Try to cover that processing fee.
Awesome, thank you.
But from my memory, that I would have wanted to inquire about that, because it said $3 processing fee for both seasonal and daily. So in the case of the seasonal, it's $4 off, so it'd be just $1 off? Or, yeah, that'd be net, and then for the daily, it'd be just offset? Because it's $3 more, but we're going to subtract $3, so you're not paying for the processing fee just for the ticket? Gotcha. Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Cochran?
Yes, thank you. That addressed a couple of my questions. The other one I wanted to ask, just to clarify, because I thought, I heard one way, and then I thought I heard another way. This proposal would be in addition to the BOGO idea, or would this be instead of?
We're going to not do the BOGO this year. This is going to be online.
I see, okay.
But we brought it to the work session to see what the appetite was of the commission.
Okay.
Part of the discussion, I know we're centering on that 10%, that $4, I think we need to have a discussion references because of the issue being a $30 fine and a $40 seasonal pass. Something we need to, at some point, have that discussion to say, "What are we going to do with that fine for not having it?" People are just going to come in and pay that and not get the seasonal pass. I'd rather have them come back to the beach, right? Come back and visit us and not just pay the fine.
You had mentioned the current, the word has escaped me now. The... Not the T2 system, the current...
Kiosk?
Kiosk, thank you. The current kiosks that we have take T-Mobile and some other ones, but there are five that only take Verizon, and those are working. Do those other ones also take Verizon too, though, right?
They do not.
They do not, okay.
Because Verizon has, they have some sort of, like, disclosure that if you use Verizon chips, you have to use their modems. So the modems that we have right now are universal, and they take the carriers that allow for that. But Verizon does not allow for that. So in order for us to have, to run with Verizon, we would have to upgrade our modems to those Verizon modems.
And I'm sure you guys aren't our IT department, and I don't know if anybody from IT is here, but my basic understanding of IT and how that all works is, you have to have the signal to begin with from like, the tower for it to work. And we don't have any of those towers. Why did we get those kiosks?
Question again?
Why did we get the kiosks that we don't have towers for?
So those, I think, before Tim or myself or Ashley were here, those kiosks were purchased. So I think it was the product that we chose to go with at that point in time, and having the multiple... My understanding is having the multiple carriers on there was seen as an option that would give us the best chance of getting service out there, because there just wasn't good service out there, period.
Okay.
At that point in time, it was before we got the Verizon tower, so...
Right, okay, all right. And then the last thing is, you guys were talking about the website portal, to be able to sit at your car, get onto this website, and then to enter in your information. Another thing that I wish IT was here for, but in my own personal experience, I don't have Verizon. So my phone is almost like a brick at the beach. I can't get on the internet. But you know what I can get on? I can get on Facebook Messenger, I can get on apps still. So I think that that's something that I always want people to know about, that if you have the app, you might have more success than the website if you're not a Verizon customer.
The, I'm sorry.
If you're out at the beach, you can just go to the kiosk and have, we're all using it. Other option is going to be the website.
Yeah, I'm just talking about for the people who want to save the money, trying to help them out. And I don't know how I feel about doing this besides the BOGO. And I agree with Commissioner Kilgo's sentiment about the amount. I think that it's, I hear you're picking a number, but I hear like, I think, in my mind, it's just a little low. So, I appreciate you guys, though, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cochran?
So to confirm, there's not an app forthcoming, it'd be a portal only?
It is an option for the future. We opted for the website first, because my thought process was, my phone also doesn't work at the beach, I wouldn't be able to download an app. I have a much better chance of loading a webpage than I would to download an app at the beach. So my thought process was, if we were going to have to do one or the other, the website first while we're launching this online option, to get the word out, would be better first, until maybe, hopefully, better options for connectivity at the beach comes along somewhere down the line. Or once our patrons and our tourists get used to the fact that we do now have that online option, they will then know, maybe in the future, to download the app prior to coming to the beach, to then have that option. But my thought process, when, and a few other people that we spoke through, like, downloading an app at the beach would be next to impossible. But if you put in a webpage and put your phone in the right spot, it might load eventually, but an app is not going to download.
Yeah, neither are. I've got a drive clear down by the ice cream shops to get service.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cochran? Yeah, I'd be interested in eventually getting an app, hopefully. But also, I know that we are wanting to roll out Wi-Fi across our entire park system. You know, we're slowly getting there, you know, adding a few parks a year. Eventually, it'd be nice. I know there's some unique infrastructure limitations in doing that at the beach, but I think ultimately, we'd like to get Wi-Fi, public Wi-Fi available throughout our entire park. But I think ultimately we'd like to get wifi, public wifi available throughout our entirety of our park system, which would then help with this situation of the apps or the website. So thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner German.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Cozal and Ashley. Got here a little later. I apologize. I had to pick up my grandson from high school. Now, strange that they grow so fast. But I heard you talk about data and. Go back in here and this plate reader program for beach passes. Which consists of this T two system. I know some people are very sensitive when it comes to information and data. In comparisons with how the process works now where. Residents could pick up a pass, you know, physical pass compared to this digital pass due to the plate reader. Could you explain to the public or me that this is not like a tracking system or anything like that? So they could, you know, get a understanding of, you know, how this works.
Current system is if I put in my plate, A B C one, two. Ashley's working now at the beach and they go up and check that plate. If A B C one, two, three is in the system, I'm good. A B C one, two, three is not in the system, they'll be looking to get. Also be looking to see how many citations that person has had. That's basically the system is a name associated with a plate.
Correct. And whatever information is needed for the actual purchase of the pass that the process, the card processor requires.
Okay, now let me ask this. If for some odd reason, the person has several citation, maybe worn out for the rest with. Be able to see that information, if that's something that would probably hinder them.
It's not tied in with our state lien system.
Okay, okay, that's good.
At all.
Yeah.
It's just housed housed within the T two system.
Okay, okay. And you're talking about upgrading the network service to Verizon or all kiosks? Well, I could say Verizon is a good network. I remember in twenty ten, I was in Germany, well, actually Austria, I climbed the Austrian Alps. And someone called me from the United States up there. So hey, I'm convinced that that's a real good network. You know, I'm like, hey, you got the wrong number. Yep, yep, so, yep, so I'm sold on that.
Commissioner German?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments at this time, commissioners? Right, this is on our consent agenda for form of consideration.
We come back tomorrow for the consent agenda. If if it is bold, we could present.
I won't be here tomorrow.
I apologize. That's today.
Delayed to the twenty fifth potentially. Which. I know I got some questions about revenue versus expenses and all that. Got some some information of that, but I'm not sure.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor. I would be pulling this because I have I have issues with it, so.
You're pulling it, but then planning to vote tonight or pulling it and wanting to defer it?
I think it needs more discussion. There's a lot of things that are going to have discussion tonight, so I think. Deferring it, I mean, I know we want to get all of this in order before. BOGO season starts or the the purchase season starts for these passes. I don't want to kick the can too far down the road, but I personally thinks it think it needs a little bit further discussion for a couple of things. I love the technology upgrades and everything. I think it could be good. We didn't lose revenue last year, though, and the BOGO sold. Twenty seven hundred passes, like I think that that shows that it was a good thing, so.
Does look like we had a had a dent in revenue from our seasonal passes, but the gains in the in the daily passes offset that.
Right. So. It. I don't think that we have to not do one to do the other. I think, I mean, this is just my thoughts, right? Do BOGO and do a discount if you purchased online, get more people comfortable going to our website, purchasing their stuff. You know, license plate or public information anyway, so like I'm not worried about the the plate reader info part of it, but. Get people comfortable going to the website and giving them a discount to see if we can get back some more of those. Seasonals if they could get their pass for thirty six or maybe even lower than that if they go online and get it. And recapture some more, some more passes from folks.
So I got one thing that I would just because this is the work session portion of the meeting if and this would be the time to have a robust discussion. If there were things that the commission wanted staff to come back with at a later date. So if that discussion was to happen now, rather than, you know, voting to table something or voting something down on us bringing it back. It could be we could have that discussion now and then we could decide if we just remove it before we get to consent.
Yeah, establish expectations of what we want brought back. Yeah, and thank you for moving this or adding this to the work session. When I did see it just on the consent agenda, I had some. Questions, reservations, we've been hearing tonight, particularly around whether or not we were going to proceed with BOGO this year. And I initially have the mind of preserving BOGO, but preserving BOGO for the stickers where you buy them in person. Because when I advocate for BOGO last year, it was with the intent to help out our Greater Muskegon residents. It wasn't intended to help out everybody across the country where they could buy online. It was intended to help folks in the Greater Muskegon area. If they wanted to come in and buy a pass, get a free pass, they could give their free pass to, you know, their neighbors or their family member. Friends, whomever is part of a a gift. It wasn't necessarily here. Anybody in the country can now buy BOGO and so. It's still. Yeah, wrestling with that notion as to what we do with BOGO and how we do with BOGO, if we do BOGO at all this year. The other thing is if we do do BOGO, then we should need to make that decision tonight because we're going to have to. Particularly if we're doing passes only, we're going to have to make sure we have the passes available unless, did we just print? Last time and they redeemed them for the physical passes? If we didn't have the stickers ready last time around, did we just print out something for redemption later? Did we actually have stickers ready?
We had the physical stickers ready last year.
Okay.
And we would have them ready this year as well.
Okay, but we don't have them right now, but we would need to know very, they are ordered, so they're forthcoming regardless of, okay.
Yeah, so that would just go hurdles.
Okay, so that's resolved. That was just a issue, yes. It is not a factor, okay. Commissioner Kago.
So so then my question would be the why not do both thing, right? If we did it for our Greater Muskegon folks and they could come in to do BOGO like they did last year, where we sold twenty seven hundred. And then for our visitors who. Didn't get a chance to partake in the BOGO, there's an option for them to still get a discount if they buy their pass online. Like the do both part in my brain, like it works. So that's just my thought to do both.
Commissioner Kago, Commissioner Koachin.
Thank you. I would also agree with that thinking, but to kind of speak to your point, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the access online and having anybody available to get this in the world, most people, tourists that come here. They're, I I feel like the number of people who are going to be buying beach passes for the season and getting a BOGO. Are going to be the people who are coming here in the spring, in the summertime, not necessarily the people in November and December. I wish we had that data to see, you know, where people were were coming from, even antecdotally. But that's just what my gut tells me. And so if we opened the BOGO up online, because it's also an accessibility issue. For our residents and our Greater Muskegon residents who have mobility issues and getting out of the house. So I I would rather see that online even for that month to allow for people to get that.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
So. And Ms. May, correct me if I'm wrong here, but one of the things. That we could do on the backend of the portal to get that type of data that Commissioner Koachin was talking about is we can ask for zip codes, correct?
Yes, and I do have the option in there. It's an optional option when they purchase their passes to put their zip code in there. It is not required, but I put it in there merely so that we could get an idea of where our tourists come from.
As part of payment, though, with presumably paying by credit card, isn't it standard that you enter zip code for payment processing?
I I believe that the payment processing, and I could be wrong, but I I'm, I think that the payment processing through T two only requires. Card information and security code. I don't think it requires the zip code.
Okay.
But we wouldn't have access to that information even if it did, because that all goes right. That's not stored anywhere where we can see it.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was an opportunity, if they did require zip code as part of payment processing, if we could restrict payments on BOGO to only select zip codes.
Oh, yeah. That might be something, but it would have to be, I would imagine it would have to be something that's built.
Just for the BOGO, not for the whole year, just to clarify.
Yeah, I I believe it would be something that would be have to actually be built into our portal. Because it's not something that's there currently, so I would have to request it to be built. And whether or not it would be done in time for a BOGO sale, for like a holiday season BOGO sale is probably pretty low.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager.
And then something else, just to kind of build on what Ms. May was talking about with on the backend. The simpler we keep the website loading, the easier it is for for different cell phones to pull it up. So we want to keep that in mind, too. Like adding the zip code in, not a big deal, but the more. Stuff that's going on in the background, the longer it'll take to load or process. So we're trying to keep this one kind of. Simple right now, so.
And so what is City Hall's operations for December? You'll be closed down Friday the nineteenth and not reopening.
Well, we've got the calendar. We've got, so we would be closed. Twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth, twenty sixth. And so we would be open the twenty second and twenty ninth is probably the better.
Twenty second, twenty ninth, okay.
Yeah, because Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are holidays. Well, actually, no, we would, no, we would be open on the twenty third. Because Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are the holidays, they wouldn't get moved.
So twenty second, twenty third, twenty ninth, thirtieth, okay.
Yeah.
So the first full three weeks of December and then two days each of the final weeks, okay? Gotcha. So if we, it's good amount of open days if we were to do it through for the month of December. Alright, Vice Mayor St. Clair, Commissioner Keener, anything to ask or add on this topic?
Add on to the BOGO discussion, last year our BOGOs were walk-ins. So we could continue to do that, no problem and have that at the desk and then do the online for. Start with. Just as an option so that we can still do that and still get that, you know, seventeen hundred people.
Yeah, I mean, that's personally my preference in terms of just being able to ensure that it's limited, better limited to our immediate neighbors. Because that was the the intent in terms of who we're kind of giving a break to and and helping out with that. Although we still are going to be maintaining our free Wednesday. Which also is maybe a contributing factor to the sales. Vice Mayor St. Clair.
I believe last year we went significantly into January with the buy one, get one free also. So if we did a smaller window. That would produce less people taking advantage of that opportunity.
What was that timeframe on? It was in your first or second? Because we did go considerably into January.
Yeah, it was December tenth through January sixteenth.
Okay. So we limited it just the month of December.
We were a little late on getting.
Yeah.
It going and then getting the word out, so I think that that's.
Alright, yes, Commissioner Kago.
Just question, so if we if we leave this on consent agenda and we vote for it, since the BOGO is not a part of it. We can just say that we're going to do a BOGO sale this year? Because BOGO is not one.
We can amend that to reflect language speaking to. About what that's what the commission wishes to do. Mr. Manager.
And I don't know logistically, so I apologize for this question. One of the things that I was thinking about with regards to the BOGO, which I'm in favor of is. Last year, the question came up with how do we regulate if like someone from the same household was coming in? Because for our local residents, we, it's two free per residence. And so do we find a way to keep track of so it's only, you know, buy one, get one per resident? It was per transaction last year, I believe. But that would necessarily. So it's possible that you could have had. A spouse come in and then the other spouse come in.
So you're saying last year if someone came in and said, hey, I want to buy three passes and get three free, we were limiting it to only one?
One, one purchase, one free.
But they can make three purchases?
But I'm saying like like one, one at a time, so that that could only be one transaction, but there was, wouldn't necessarily be anything to stop them from coming back.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, we tried to hold it per person, one essentially free pass per person with the intention of hold, you know, kind of like honor system. We did, and we do keep track on paperwork of the the names of the people that purchased the passes. But beyond that, I mean, once we got so far into it, it was nearly impossible. The Police Department hallway was very busy last year in that in that timeframe. And it was next to impossible to verify if that person had come in once we got far enough into it. Because we're looking through, we're talking hundreds of pages of information. So it was sort of an honor system thing and we did have comments made by people who were like, oh, I'll just come in tomorrow. You won't remember. Ace, because the line is down the hallway and truly probably didn't remember their face.
Unless we're able to maintain a a shared spreadsheet that everyone has access to and so you have the input, it's like, oh, yep, they were already here. And I can see it both ways, like I can see one rationale saying, hey, you should be able to buy multiple ones because I might want to be be gifting it to all of my, you know, nieces and nephews. On the other hand, I can understand us wanting to protect against someone trying to profiteer off this. And, you know, buy a bunch of passes so they can then sell them, you know, they're getting a bunch free and they're going to sell them and profiteer. So I'm going to defer to the judgment of our professional staff on the administration of this program. I'm not going to get into the intricacies of how to implement this. Gotcha. Any other thoughts or questions before we move on? Nope. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's hope we have public hearings. First public hearing is a Brownfield Plan Amendment, number one for Harbor Thirty One Hotel and Lake Shore Hotel Partners LLC. Good evening. Can I introduce yourself and please report over on the side?
Good evening. I am Josh LaHaze, Development Analyst with the City of Muskegon. So I am here for the public hearing for the Harbor Thirty One Hotel. This is the first amendment. So as you all recall, you all planned the original Brownfield Plan Amendment on December tenth, two thousand and twenty four. The same time that the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority also passed it. This is being proposed again because there had been some changes to the Brownfield Plan Amendment to do state school tax capture. For reimbursement costs associated with the Michigan Strategic Fund Eligible Activities. So that added some additional things to the budget such as plan preparation contingency. And then there was a decrease in the the entrance interest. As you all recall, this is a two point nine nine acre development. It will be a five story hotel with a hundred and twenty six rooms, including meeting rooms and indoor pools and things like that. For a total investment of about twenty eight point eight million dollars. They plan to start construction in winter twenty twenty six and be completed in twenty twenty seven. This is a part of the the bigger Harbor Thirty One mixed use community that is happening. Some things that was discussed during the the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. So they reviewed this today at their their meeting and they put a contingency on the plan that. The plan must follow the ADA compliance, the federal ADA compliance. A plan that we had received in the plot in the past said that the rooms were with only one bedroom. It will only be five one bedrooms that were ADA compliant according to the ADA. Section two twenty four in the ADA, it needs to be seven and there needed to be some changes to rooms that were. Had communication requirements as well. And so since that meeting this morning, we did do some fact finding and we hope to receive an updated development plan from the developers. Which we're under the impression that when we receive that new plan, they actually have thirteen ADA compliant rooms. And we hope to follow up with the DDA, but just wanted to let you all know that the DDA did put the B R A, sorry. Put that contingency on the plan that they must follow ADA compliance. So if this is approved, it's up to the discretion of the commission if they also want to put that discrepancy on there to that contingency on there. And also understanding to, they also put that on the development and reimbursement agreement as well. So that is currently on consent agenda, so if you want to put that contingency on there, just be mindful of that the B R A did put that stipulation on the development.
So they met this morning and they recommend, made the recommendation with the caveat or condition that that's added, so. Because this packet has been updated to reflect that, correct?
This happened today.
So I just want to confirm that.
The packet has not been updated to reflect that contingency.
Understand it, then that is the motion that we'd be considering because that's their recommendation with that condition. So we would have to actively remove the condition if we don't want it, otherwise we're concurring, we vote yes, we're concurring with the recommendation inclusive of that condition.
Well, but it's more than a recommendation, Mr. Mayor. It's, they're an independent body who signed the contract, so. Yes, the updated motion should be there, but it's not a recommendation from the B R A. It's a requirement. For them. It should be for us also.
Yeah, so you're saying you could not remove that condition then?
You could only as to you. The Brownfield Authority still uh, would require it and developer would have to comply.
Okay, so that's non-negotiable, which I don't think we wanted to remove anyhow, so this is non-negotiable. Alright then, can we just save time and not even bring this to us? If the B R A has the final say, let's make our meeting short.
You're both independent.
I know, but anyhow, I'm I'm tongue in cheek. Um, alright, so this development agreement is separate, though. And that development agreement, the development and reimbursement agreement. Is attached but to be approved separately.
It's, yeah, it's currently on consent agenda.
As well on there.
Yeah, that's what the B R A recommended.
Both of those are non-negotiable from the B R A then, okay, thank you. So this is a public hearing. Before we um, open it up to the public commissioners, do you have any questions for? Commissioner Kogo.
Yeah, when reviewing the packet this weekend, I said, um. I could really use um, a little bit more information on the state school tax capture part of it. Could you explain this particular brownfield and that wording, the state school tax capture?
Yeah, so um, the developer will be capturing that as far as their brownfield for eligible activities. But the school will be held harmless because the state will reimburse the school for them not receiving those taxes.
Gotcha, okay. Makes sense, sweet.
So there was somebody who had asked me if there are plans to can. To basically to make a path from the parking lot to the bike trail so people can access downtown better. Do we know? If that was in the meeting this morning?
That was not discussed at the meeting this morning, but the developers are here and when it's time for them to come up, they probably can answer that question for you.
Alright, any other questions, commissioners? Alright, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to give comment at this time with regard to this brownfield? Yes, Ms. Jamie Cross joining us from the NIM's neighborhood.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank um, the Harbor Thirty One Development Team. Um, especially the restoration of the wetlands. Um, if you haven't been there yet, you need to check them out. Um, there's the wetlands on the west side of the property, the wetlands behind the boardwalk. And the um, two sets of wetlands on the east side of the property all are doing very well. And it goes a long way to help protect wildlife habitat on the site. And especially help to protect the lake as we move into climate change that we're already seeing on the lake today. I'm also happy to see the hotel move forward. We need hotel space, so it's great, but and I'm also in support of the Brownfield Development um, funds for this project. And I appreciate the questions that have arisen about the ADA accessibility. My question before the commission is focused on public access, so I'm gonna.
If you'll hand it to the clerk, please. Thank you.
So um, anyway, so this is a map that I was, Mike Hausman has given me um, that shows the public access points. And so as you know, a lot of the progress has been made to date on this P U D. Um, I just want to have, see if there's a conversation that can be had about the promises to public access. And to the public access points, so um, just in terms of a a pathway and a way up onto the boardwalk. So today is just mainly for me is we're moving forward with this P U D, there's Brownfield money being raised. You know, and so where are we with the public access points being solidified and I do really um, appreciate. The work that Mike Hausman's done to provide this information and he's come out on my walk, so I do appreciate all that. I would just like to see the public part of this. Kind of solidified and finished before we start, you know, with more funds, so. Um, so on a second point, and I don't know if this, I just don't know the rules tonight. So I just want to say in terms of the rezoning of um, Fisherman's Landing and Mark Dock, I just feel like it's a little bit of the cart before the horse.
That'll be a separate.
I, yeah, I don't know, sometimes it make me talk all at once, so I.
This is just a public hearing on the Brownfield. Thank you. Alright, Mr. Brad Hastings joining us from the McLaughlin neighborhood. Welcome, you have three minutes to write your remarks.
Yeah, good evening. Um, so when this came before the Downtown Development Authority, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority last December. Um, I, we had made a motion to approve contingent on ADA compliance. It sounds like there was some discussion between the developer. And the building department at the time, they agreed that it was compliant. However, this morning, the design plan that was in front of me was the same one that I saw in December. And when I was looking at that, so there's section two twenty four of the Americans with Disabilities Act uh, accessibility guidelines. Lays out the scoping requirements for transient lodging. And so in that, it lays out the number of required accessible rooms, so for a hotel that has a hundred and one to a hundred and fifty units. They're required to have seven hotel rooms that meet mobility uh, accessibility standards. And then there's an additional, they need to have twelve rooms that comply with the communication accessibility standards, so. These are things like alarms, door knocking features, uh, telephones that have audible and visi- video or visual alarm systems. Um, and then on top of that, there's a requirement for dispersion so that people with disabilities have choices on the types of hotel rooms that they're going to book. So the design uh, plan that I saw this morning had the, all of the five hotel rooms that were there were single bedroom suites. Um, so that only allows one choice for a person with the, a disability trying to book at this hotel, so ideally. The the accessible hotel rooms are split. And dispersed among different types of hotel rooms and different cau- uh, price points for hotels, so. Uh, just wanted to bring that before the commission today. The developer and I did talk briefly before this meeting and he sent me a chart. That has, that says that there are other rooms being made accessible, but I just, the design plan that I saw this morning did not reflect that. So I wanted to make sure that that was before this commission and ultimately I'm trying to protect the developer here because if he builds this. And it's not compliant and a person with a disability goes to book and says, hey, I only have one option when I'm booking at your hotel. And then they file a complaint with the federal government, that gets very expensive with a lawsuit and then potential renovations and so. Just wanting to make sure that those things are buttoned up before they move forward with a, an approved design plan.
Thank you. Appreciate you joining us, uh, sharing that um, those insights. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to give public comment at this time on this hearing? With regard to the Brownfield. Saying none, we're gonna go to the phones. Phone number is two, three, one, seven, two, four, six, seven, two, one. This is a public hearing specifically in regard to an amendment to the Brownfield Plan for Harbor Thirty One Hotel um, with Lake Shore Hotel Partners LLC. Does not sound like we have takers for phone and comments for this public hearing. Alright. hiding behind the column. Um, cuz I would like to hear from our Development Services team as well as from the developer. And understanding this situation with regard to ADA compliance, considering it was approved a year ago with the caveat of. This needing to be ADA compliant. Looks like the same plan was presented, no changes were made. According to our building officials, uh, it is ADA compliant. We have reason to believe that it's not ADA compliant. And I'd like to understand what has transpired and what will transpire to ensure um, proper uh, compliance. And if you'd like to to speak on this issue, sir, you are welcome to do so, um, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Mike Hausman. I represent Harbor Thirty One and Wolverine Building Group. Um, thank you very much for the kind words. It really has been just a pleasure working in Muskegon. We've been here a long time trying to make this work. Um, and yeah, I love the wetlands. They turned out great. Um, unfortunately with the drawings, I think there was a cross there because. Uh, the process with Marriott is we have to get them to like a forty percent and then a seventy percent and we're submitting them. And recently, more recently is when we submitted ninety percent drawings and I'm told by my architect, we have thirteen. Um, accessible rooms. Um, he did send me the chart. I'm counting it. I'm seeing eleven. But we're fully committed to make sure that we have um, the even more accessible rooms. I think we might exceed it actually if we have the thirteen. And uh, Brad and I are gonna uh, coordinate together and make sure that we're hitting those points. Accessibility for lights and all that kind of stuff. Definitely, definitely protects us and we do have it on multiple floors. It's not just downstairs on the. Main level, we have two queen room, you know, like eight two queen rooms. We have some singles, studio and some with um. Um, single queen. But we are pretty much there, we'll, and I'll make sure we lock it in. Um, and to uh, the, as far as a pathway to the um, to the bike path, we would absolutely love that. I didn't, I don't see it on the plan that I'm looking at right here. I'm shocked that it's not there cuz we've talked about it so much and we just have to work with the city to make sure we have. A easement to access that, but definitely is part of our. Um, and then the accessibility to the boardwalk uh, to the water, that's been on my mind for a long time. We have the easements in place for it, but it's not, it's not good access yet and I've been talking with Jake often. Um, I have a different idea I'd like to try. We currently have two access points. And we have a emerging development on the, would be the west side as you come in. Uh, with apartments and mixed use and we really need some parking so people can park to go there. When we first finished the wetlands, people were driving right into the wetlands parking there, so uh, they took the fence down and would go fishing. But uh, so it's on the front of my mind and I'm trying to figure out the time to do it. It might be in the construction of the hotel get. Cuz I need, I want that ADA accessible too. Park and have that access, so I promise you I'll try very hard through the, cuz other, there's other projects now in the pipeline, be the. Interest rates are changing. And uh, we'll definitely try and coordinate that work with.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Hausman, and appreciate hearing that you're targeting minimum ADA um, compliance, but looking to have. More.
Yeah.
Um, number of units, but also reassuring that the units will be varied um, in in composition as well as price points. Okay.
And different levels, there's some on every floor, so it uh, they did a nice job and I, you know, Marriott's a good brand. Some of that is actually generated by them as well.
Okay, I have it here that we are still gonna be doing the connection uh, to the bike, like the the Lake Shore Trail from from the market. I know that had been discussed in. In previous uh, meetings, so that's still um, uh, the expectation. And I really would add to to the point that we heard and as you just spoke to about public access, that is really important. We added wayfinding signs this year around town. So that our community understands where public, uh, the waterfront public access is and we have signage pointing to that area. Um, we don't have clearly defined access points to get to it.
Right.
Um, and we do ki- Parmenter uh, law kindly makes um, and one access point available to their parking lot, which is appreciated. Um, but we would like to have uh, more and better um, access points and I know I access it on the far west and from the sidewalk, which is. Um, accessible, you know, universally accessible, um, you don't have stairs, um, it's just inclined, so like you can, you can get on it there and walk. Um, but that's not also a a technical public access point or uh, clearly identified public access point, although. Um, practically it is an an access point um, that is is usable, um, that I also appreciate, so. That would be nice to see.
It is, it's my personal goal to get that done this year, especially that I I kinda, I'll work with Jake, of course. I'd like to bring one of them in centered a little more. It'll take some uh, agreement with. That's where everybody's going now and. Isn't a brick that you gotta step on to get up on. It's just not safe and it's not the way it should be, so.
Yeah, not an ideal way to access it. Um, alright, so, Mr. Manager, perhaps you could weigh in or our Development Service Director at Com in terms of. Um, as this is moving forward, given the the condition from the B R A, um, that I anticipate, we will keep. Have that same condition, um, how will this practically be? What's the process uh, going forward to ensure that that condition is is honored?
Well, so. It'll have to be through our permitting uh, review to make sure that it's um, meeting those requirements and it's not that it's a. You know, wishy washy, think it's a very specific part of the code that we're looking at. What we looked at was before it said. Need to be in compliance with ADA and so there was room for interpretation there, I guess. Um, and and we we have had some changeover in uh, the building office, so. Uh, a new building official to work with there to make sure that we're looking at this very specific part of the code, so that's something that that we would be doing through that process.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, anything to ask or add on this item before we proceed to vote? Commissioner Coach.
Yes, um, in regards to that public access, is there anything that we can do to make sure that that gets in there?
What's in the um, it is a requirement, the public access.
Yes, but I mean like sooner rather than later, um, because we've seen with other instances where it has been a requirement, but then. Has not happened still to this day.
Imagine that'd be better addressed under the development and reimbursement agreement or what in terms of if you wanted to have a timeline on public access points?
Oh, I I. I would call um, Director Akom up on that one just cuz I'm not as familiar with the, this is an older development agreement.
Good evening. Was the question about associating requirements to implement the public access as represented on the P U D with this Brownfield Plan Amendment?
She was, um, if I understand it correctly, Commissioner Coach was wondering about how we may be able to more definitively uh, identify timeline to ensure, you know, this.
I see.
For the public access points.
I would recommend not tying it to this specific agenda items only and especially because the developers already. Will be required to come back with an amendment to their P U D because of changes to the development program. And they plan to offer substantial changes and improvements to the public access and I think that would be a better. Spot to set conditions for a timeline.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Director Akon. Commissioner Kogo, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I I kinda was just actually gonna echo what Director Akom said because this is on the hotel. The public access is for the whole Harbor Thirty One, correct?
Better associated with the P U D.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Alright, I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Just one question there, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you, uh, Commissioner Coach for bringing that. Um, topic up about the public access, um, which is huge and um. The uh, comments from the public and the gentleman also that um, the developer. That um, stated that he's looking to make sure that the hotel is um, ADA compliant. But now with those uh, requests. To uh, make sure that they meet the standards or are in compliance with. The uh, required, I guess, rooms of this uh, is it a hundred and twenty six rooms?
Correct.
Thir- hundred thirty six, okay, hundred thirty six, thank you. That's something we could amend or is that something that um, needs to be in writing before we vote on this or?
So it's, it's already in writing at the B R A as a, as a separate entity, um, so this would just be an additional.
Reinforcement.
Reinforcement of that. It's it's already a requirement that they have to meet.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So as as our legal counsel um, explained earlier that even if we don't add the condition, it is a condition because the B R A. Um, attached as a condition on there. it is a condition, because the B R A attached it as a condition on there. So there were essentially three parties to this, the developer, the city, and the B R A. Yeah, the B R A's addition of the condition. Although I just asked for the language that they added as their condition, and so if we wish to reinforce that and add it to our amendment, we may do so.
Yeah, I'm getting the language right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Could we, counsel, say the same condition?
Like, like, yeah, like.
Same condition as the B R A?
Okay, okay. Commissioners, I've undertaken a motion to close the public hearing and approve the resolution with the same condition attached by the Brownfield Development Authority on November tenth, twenty twenty-five, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the resolution.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor St. Clair, supported by Commissioner Cochran. Any further discussion before we vote? Nope, roll call, please.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next public hearing is for P A one ninety-eight industrial facilities exemption for twenty thirty-four Latimer Drive involving Johnson Technology Incorporated.
Good evening. Good evening, Joshua Hines, Development Analyst here at the City of Muskegon. So we are asking for this to just be in consideration of a public hearing and not making an actual decision on this motion. We are asking for that change because as we were in view, reviewing this particular P A one D, one ninety-eight, we realized that there was a condition on their site plan approval that they must combine parcels. So they are currently working with our team and assessor's office to combine those parcels. So we still wanted to host a public hearing considering we had invested, you know, had announced that we would. But we plan to bring this back in front of commission for approval at the December ninth meeting, so just wanted to start there. But Johnson Technology, a company of GE Aerospace, is looking to apply for a one, P A one ninety-eight, which is an industrial facilities exemption for their real property improvements at twenty thirty-four Latimer Drive. They are hoping to do a twenty thousand dollar square foot expansion totaling about over nine million dollars. This will expand their shipping and receiving facilities and add manufacturing force space to support increasing production demands. As you all know, I F T certificate reduces taxes by fifty percent for the duration of the exemption. GE Aerospace or Johnson Technologies is an aircraft engine parts manufacturer headquartered here in Muskegon, and they have additional facilities in Norton Shores. It employs about three hundred and thirty people right now, but with the expansion, they're hoping to increase that number by ninety people. We did do our due diligence, and I'm sorry, this is our overall expansion that they're doing to several of their companies nationwide, I wanted to make that known as well too. So they're looking at like a one billion dollar nationwide expansion to some of their current facilities and infrastructure. We did work with them in regards to, we know one of the requirements that, that we have for P A one ninety-eight is for them to fill out their summary sheet to give us information on their current workforce and what their, their inclusion policies are. Because they are a federal contract, they are under Executive Order one four one seventy-three, so they did not have to necessarily provide that information, but informed us that they would be doing all they can to make sure the workforce represented the community there. The Internal Tax Committee, when we get there, did make the recommendation, but it's of course of a twelve-year abatement, but it's, we are waiting to get that combination of parcels taken care of before we are comfortable with presenting for approval to the, to the commission.
Thank you, Analyst Hines. Before we open it up to public comment for this hearing, Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Hines.
Good evening.
The Federal Order one seventy-three, you talked about the exemption piece under that organization. You said they don't have to present that due to that order. Could you explain?
Yeah, so because they are a federal contractor, they are under Executive Order one four one seventy-three, so the company is not subject to local affirmative action plan requirements. So they are not, because of that exemption, are not required to fill out that form.
Okay.
But they did indicate that they do have a work, respectful work first policy, and Ms. Thompson was waiting to receive that.
Okay, and that's something that the commission can see also have access to?
If they provide it to us, yes.
Okay, all right. I would like to see that if they do provide it, just for knowledge, because that's one of the key issues when we present these, I mean, approve these exemptions or taxes incentives. One of the questions I always ask about E O C compliance and things like that, to make sure it's fair hiring practices and equal opportunities, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner German, any other questions? Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes, thank you. I too would also like, if, if we get that, I also would like to see it. But I am, I guess I just wanna make a comment that I do hope that they get this expansion done. Ninety jobs is ninety more than we didn't have before, and I would love ninety more jobs to come to the city of Muskegon, of Muskegon County and the surrounding areas, because we need the, we need the economic growth. So I, I do look forward to them expanding and creating more jobs here in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilgo. Unless there are no other questions or any other questions, we're gonna go to the audience. Is anyone wishing to give comment on this public hearing for an industrial facilities exemption for twenty thirty-four Latimer Drive with Johnson Technology Incorporated? Seeing no takers in the audience, we're gonna go to the phones, that number's two three one seven two four six seven two one. This is specifically with regard to a public hearing on potential issuance of an industrial facilities exemption certificate. All right, looks like we have no takers for this public hearing with phone and comments. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support?
We have a motion by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Cochran. All right, any comments before we vote? Nope, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I thought Analyst Hines said we weren't voting.
We're voting on closing the public hearing and the issuance of the certificate will come to a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, I got federal state county officials update, I don't see any in the audience that may wish to update us at this time. So we're gonna go on to public comment on agenda items. And I do have a few forms here. First up, we have David Straw joining us from the Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. Welcome, sir, you have up to three minutes to write your remarks.
This is specifically regarding the rezoning, so we have to keep commentary to the rezoning piece of it. Any other commentary can be under general public?
Well, my question would be that if, and I'm not sure how the zoning ties into that, but I have still not heard anyone say what the total cost of that project is. I've not heard what the hundred percent funding of that project is coming from, except for if you buy Fishman, if the mart buys or if you sell Fisherman's Landing, you've got some money from that. You've got two point eight million dollars coming from the Third Street improvement, but I don't understand how, and then there's another thing too, you've got an issue possibly with dredging that could occur at the channel or into Lake Michigan, or Muskegon Lake. And what I'm getting at is, you've got a major project, but you've got missing pieces that would, in my mind, would allow you to make decisions on zoning, make decisions that are tied to people who might have relied on, on the project total being that they're gonna get a nature park out of this. And you only have grants that may or may not have been submitted yet. So that concerns me that you can make any kind of decision on a project, missing those three things. Because Eagle hasn't been talked to about if there's dredging. And that can include construction of a fifty acre cement parking lot for the storage of containers, the dock quay area, which is right along the dock, which is currently Fisherman's Landing, it's broken concrete, a mix of broken concrete and no concrete. So you do have, it's not a full hardened area yet. From the picture, it kinda goes along the current Fisherman's Landing frontage or the channel, and it wraps. So if that's gonna become all hardened space there, Eagle, I would imagine, would be involved. So my only point is from that is that there's people relying on the total project thinking they might be getting a nature park. I'm also concerned with the costs that it, because I think I heard before, sell Fisherman's Landing, you got a two point eight million dollar grant, you've got grants being asked for, you might go into the improvement fund or the general fund, which is kinda like, I think it's still taxpayers' money. And if all things fail, you come back to the taxpayers. And I think with a city that is twenty, twenty-one percent people with incomes below the poverty line and a median income of about forty-six thousand dollars, that's putting a big burden on them if you come back taxing those people, you know? On top of it, I kinda learned a little bit about this Harbor Thirty-One, and you've got just aesthetics of, you build a hotel that's got four or five stories to it, you're looking out over at, you have Terrace Point, Veridian, and Harbor Thirty-One, let alone the nursing home down the street. And you're looking at a dock, a dock area that could have hundred and fifty-foot cranes, five, five fifty-foot stored containers on it. So that's my, my concern there, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Straw. Appreciate you joining us this evening. Next up, we have Dr. Mark Parletti joining us from Beechwood Bluffton neighborhood. This is specifically with regard to zoning, or do you wanna speak more generally?
I don't really know how it comes into play. Can I talk about, come up there and you can tell me?
Well, if you, you wanna speak specifically with regard to the rezoning of Fisherman's Landing campground or rezoning of Mart Dock?
Because I think it's a mistake to rezone.
Okay, please come up to the microphone and.
I've been up here a lot.
Up to three minutes to write your remarks, sir.
I'm Dr. Mark Parletti, I live in Bluffton. I've been up here a lot, I got a lot of material to work with here, I feel like a mosquito at a nudist colony, I don't know where to begin. But anyway, and as serious to note, today's the fiftieth anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald. We lost all twenty-nine of our sailors up in Lake Superior. I'd like to take a little silence for that. And what I see, you know, I've been up here, I've never been a person that comes up in city halls and all that, and somehow I moved here, and I've been up here a lot. I don't know if anything I said has ever been done, but today I hope to appeal to all of you that you are gonna, you are here to serve somebody. And what your decision is with this property is gonna have a lasting effect on a multi-generational park that's enjoyed by the people. And I've had the commissioner say that eighty-five to ninety percent of all the input they received about this has not been favorable to destroying the campground, a rare urban campground that Outside Magazine, a national premier magazine of adventure travel, says is rare and it's sought after. So I think, you know, we have a, you guys work hard to get to be a politician and to get elected, I know you're knocking a lot of doors, and, but I just think it's wrong that somebody that just has a short half-life of, you know, influence on the community can make a decision on something that's been here for so long. And so I think that's capricious, you know, that we should be even put in that situation. I don't see anyone clamoring to go in between the boat mart, to hike in the swamps that are polluted over there. I, you know, I, that doesn't make sense to me, I'm a nature guy, I'm a bike rider, I don't, it doesn't make sense that that's somehow gonna beat what we already have, something we took junk land and turned it into something, it's a huge success story. Back to the whole thing about the politician or the elected official, I, I'm just hoping, you know, and I'm sorry to pick on you, Ms. Gorman, I'm hoping that you'll recuse yourself someday on this vote, I know the vote on, anyway, anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parletti, appreciate you joining us. Next up, we have Evan Ewing joining us from the Glen Side neighborhood. This is specifically regarding the rezoning topic that you wanna speak on?
I don't think it's specifically to the zoning part, but it is to the Mart Dock.
That you wanna speak on then?
Proposal.
You wanna speak under general public comment, then?
Right.
Okay.
Can I do that now?
Not, not right now, this is specifically on agenda items. Thank you, sir. Another form, I don't believe she's here anymore. And then, Ms. Darlene DeHoodie of the City of Norton Shores, do you wish to speak on the zoning items or under general public comment?
I'm protesting and urging to vote.
Would you like to say that at the microphone with regard to the zoning?
So is that okay?
If you wish to, you, this is a agenda item with regard to rezoning, you can speak on that matter.
Yes, regarding item J, I would like to urge the commission to vote no. And the reason is, I would like to acknowledge the public was supporting Fisherman's Landing. And by the public, which the legal definition is everyone, not differentiated by residents, my viewpoint is equity. If you want tourists, they are gonna come from outside of the city of Muskegon. If you want people to shop in Muskegon, you need to have the household goods that they want being sold down there. That's not the case. So don't penalize the campers for not going downtown. Their economic value has never been substantiated. Okay, now, from March to April, the change.org online petition got in twenty-eight days, one thousand four hundred and forty-one people saying they did not want this proposal. In addition, in one day, a hundred and twenty-four people gave me their names, and I'm going to give them to you later. In this online petition, these are the respondents from the United States, and I'm gonna read them, hopefully I have time. Alabama, Arizona, Arkansas, California, Delaware, Florida, Georgia, Hawaii, Idaho, Illinois, Indiana, Kentucky, Louisiana, Maryland, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, New York, North Carolina, Ohio, Oklahoma, Oregon, South Carolina, Tennessee, Texas, Utah, Washington, West Virginia, Wisconsin. Michigan residents, six hundred and twenty-five were from Muskegon. The rest were from Whitehall, Holland, Grand Rapids, Detroit, Twin Lake, Grand Haven, North Muskegon, Norton Shores, Rivanna, Spring Lake, Fruitport, Lansing, Montague, Muskegon Heights, Holton, Shelby, Blue Lake Township, White Cloud, and other Michigan cities, a hundred and seventy-eight people. Also, online, in your first public comment, a hundred and eighty-two people were against this, whereas only twenty-seven were for it. So all told, there's one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven people that I'm gonna present to you tonight that are against this proposal. I think it's very strange that you would pass a zoning change before you even vote on whether you're going to be doing this proposal. In light of all the crisis that we're in currently, Fisherman's Landing is the solid component of this city. It can withstand affordable, it's affordable housing for people that don't have it, et cetera.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Okay, so I'm gonna give you these documents so that you can hand them.
You can give any documents to our clerk at the end of the dials, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on an agenda item or items? Sir, kindly come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and if you're a city Muskegon resident, which neighborhood you're joining us from, and if you're not a city resident, which other township, village, or city you're joining us from?
My name is Andy Zorn, I live at seventeen sixty-five Forest Park Road, Norton Shores. Business address, five hundred Irwin, Muskegon. Business address, 500 Irwin, Muskegon, Michigan. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item L bid award for the park building renovations. On Thursday, October 9th, Clifford Buck Construction Company submitted a proposal for the Sheldon Park Restrooms, Hartshorn, Harbor Master Building, and Hartshorn West, West Room Building. Bids were opened on that day, and the low bid was $390,295 from a company called JWK. I believe they're out of Grand Rapids area. The second bid that was, the second place bidder was Clifford Buck Construction Company at $409,481. I know the city of Muskegon has a 2% gap that the local contractors get for being a city Muskegon company, and we didn't quite hit that 2% gap, but I know in the past, the city council has awarded projects to the local contractor, and we are actually within 5% of the low bid. One of the reasons, a lot of the reasons I believe you should award to Clifford Buck Construction Company, we've been in this town for over 102 years. Not too many businesses can say they've been in business for 102 years, let alone a union general contractor. We did have a 10% disadvantaged business enterprise utilization applied to this project, so 10% of our bid is a DBE. All of our subcontractors and suppliers for this project are all from Muskegon, every single one of them. And I know in the past, like I said earlier, the council has waived that and awarded to the local contractor, and I believe that particular contractor was a lot more than the 5% difference that we are currently right now. So I'm asking that you guys vote for Clifford Buck Construction for this significant project. Questions or is this it?
Just time for you to give your input with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zorn. Appreciate you sharing your perspective with us. Anyone else in the audience wish to give public comment on an agenda item at this time? Sorry, we're still on agenda items. All right, we're going to go to the phone. It's 231-724-6721. This is an opportunity to give comments specifically to agenda items. Call in, please identify which item you're speaking on, state your name, and if you're a city Muskegon resident, which neighborhood you're calling from, and if you're not a city resident, which other township, village, or city you're calling from.
Hi, this is Jeanette Moore. How you doing?
Hello, Jeanette. Thank you for joining us from Jackson Hill.
Because I had to leave. I'm from Jackson Hill, but I wanted to talk about the Mart Dock and that I'm in support of the land swap of the Mart Dock with the Fisherman's Landing. I'm in support of it because we, the neighbors and the people that actually live in this neighborhood would love to see job development and the use of our lakefront. We would also love to see the revenue go back into our city, our neighborhoods, our parks, and enjoy the waterfront without pay. I know that Fisherman's Landing means a lot to the people who camp there, but it's so much bigger than the campground. Our city needs jobs so we can buy homes and exist in our city. Thank you so much for the work that your commissioners do, and I know it's hard trying to speak for everyone, so I just want you to know I appreciate you guys, and I just wanted to give you my opinion along with a few other people who have came to our neighborhood association. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeanette. Appreciate you phoning in. Hello, you're with the City of Muskegon City Commission.
Yep, my name is Michael Toll calling from Norton Shores, Michigan. Would like to give my comments on, I believe it was J, Fisherman's Landing zoning.
You're doing, yes, please proceed. You have up to three minutes for your remarks.
All right. I would like to, just to, just to comment that I'm not exactly sure if it's in the city's best interest to rezone before all the money is allocated. I've heard this over and over and over, how much is this project going to cost? Where is the money coming from? However, there's never an answer. And I don't feel that's fair to not only the city of Muskegon residents, but also the businesses that are downtown that may have to foot the bill for this. I, I think that it's also a little odd that a, the city would vote on something to re, to rezone something that is not, not sure if it's going to come to fruition. However, it just seems a little shady when you put the cart before the horse. I think that's all that I really have for now. I would, I would urge that the commissioners would vote no on this project, because I think it's something that, that we will, we will truly never get back if it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toll. Appreciate you phoning in your comments. Give a few more moments for anyone else trying to phone in. Does not sound like we have any more attempts to...
Do you have another?
Oh, we have one more. Good evening, you're with the City of Muskegon City Commission. Good evening, you're with the City Commission.
Yeah, this is Brian McCarthy from Lakeside, and I wanted to make a comment about the Fisherman's Landing land swap. I'd like to see the deal go through, but I would also like to see the city consider the lease option more seriously. You know, on our, on our lakefront at Pure Marquette, we leased the land for the DACH to Michelle Harris and her company, and they're doing a great job out there, but we retain the long-term rights to that land. And I would like to see a similar option be taken very seriously by the city commission for this Fisherman's Landing land swap deal. We can give a long-term lease to the owners of the Mart Dock and create those jobs and allow them to make a profit there and at their current Third Street Wards location, but we can also retain the long-term benefit of the increased value of that land, you know, once the Mart Dock operation either ceases to exist there at Fisherman's Landing, or we find that there's a higher, better use for that land. So I think we should really consider a stronger lease option there that benefits both the city and the residents here in Muskegon. The other comment I want to make is, I noticed there's a closed session later in the meeting, and just to make it exceedingly clear, the Open Meetings Act is something that I'm very concerned about. And in, in our city rules, as well as the Open Meetings Act, it says that the commission can only consult with its attorney regarding a trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation, and only when that meeting creates a detrimental financial situation. So I'd just like to ensure that that is the case, that this closed session is for specific pending litigation. I noticed on a news article where Mayor Johnson, you were speaking about the term limits, in that news article suggested that the commission go into closed session to discuss the implications of this term limit amendment. So I just want to ensure that the commission is not discussing hypotheticals with the city attorney here, that we're actually speaking about specific litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Appreciate you phoning in from Lakeside. Does not sound like we have any more takers for phone-in comments. Mr. Ewing, I know that you are speaking tangentially on this topic. We've heard from people speaking very broadly on rezoning. If you wish to speak broadly in terms of how it connects to rezoning, rather than wait to the very end of the meeting, we'll welcome you to the podium right now. But given that we've heard broadly from other people, I don't want to disadvantage you and force you to wait, you know?
Well, my thought and concern on this project is that I don't know that you've considered all your options. And to that, I mean, with reference to the Mart Dock deal or the land swap, is it ever been considered the power of eminent domain by the city? And then if they were successful in that, they could use that property in the way the city and the people want to use it, not in the way that the developer wants to use it. I think that it's something to be investigated. I don't believe it has. I haven't heard anything on that, and I was just want to throw that out there for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Appreciate you joining us from Glenside in person this evening. All right, if there are no other takers for in-person comment or phone-in comment, we're going to move on. For consent agenda, commissioners, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Are there any that you wish to have removed for separate discussion and vote? Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you. Item C is in Charlie, H is in Henry, and I is in Igloo.
Commissioner Keener.
D is in David, J, and L.
Commissioner German.
Yes, E and F and S. I said save someone else. Thank you for pulling those two.
All right, Commissioner Cochen.
Sorry. Item G is in Go.
And Mayor, I will go ahead and pull in, because that's what I thought someone else may pull at. Yeah, just giving them that.
All right, for any of these items, which are almost the entirety of our consent agenda, for any of these items that have been pulled, is it something that you simply wish to give a remark on before we go to vote? Are these things that you want to actually deliver?
I just have a remark.
If you just have a remark, then I would kindly ask that we keep it on consent, give you the opportunity to give your remarks before we vote on the consent agenda.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
What item?
For me, it would be item D.
D, okay, so we're going to pull, we're going to leave D on consent and give Commissioner Keener an opportunity to speak on that before we go to vote. Are there any of the other items that are pulled from consent? Commissioner Cochen.
Uh, G.
G, okay. Any other items?
I could say, actually, I'd like to pull E and F. Yeah, I'd like to talk about those.
E and F, okay, okay. Then commissioners, I would entertain a motion adopting the consent agenda as presented minus items C, E, F, H, I, J, L, and N. Support.
Some will.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner German, voted by Commissioner Keener before we go to vote. Commissioner Keener, if you would like to share your remarks with regard to item D, sale of 617625 and 63500.
Yes, I'm just wondering, are these NEZs? These properties with D, E, and F, are any of those are NEZs?
I know that I'm not staff.
If you know the answer to that, I'm pretty sure they are, but...
Correct. Yeah, they, it would be separate, it would be separately NEZ on our packet if it was. These are just the sale of the properties.
Yeah, we're not considering NEZ approval.
Well, just to comment on that, I would love for us to be able to have our citizens be able to purchase these properties. I'm seeing so many of these properties go to developers. There's been an instance where there was a property right directly across the street from us, and it had been there for free for eons. We kept up with the property, no cost to the city, and my husband contacted the city multiple times over numerous years, and no one even gave him a thought about contacting him back for that property. So my comment is, I would really like us to see some of these properties start going to citizens, or even preference to citizens first before we continue to give so many to a lot of these property owners. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keener. I would encourage you to speak with the city manager about process with regard to that. It's my understanding that all city owned lots are available to anybody. They need to call in, that information will be made available, and if there's an expectation, a commitment to invest and construct within a certain timeline, then it'll be brought forward to the city commission for sale at 75% of true cash value per our lot sale policy.
Okay, I will.
So please, please confer with our city manager to ensure that process.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, thank you for reinforcing that.
Commented on, because I've heard of a number of citizens in our community that wanted to purchase property, and no one has never gotten back with them. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keener. And then we have Commissioner Kilgo.
No, I just wanted to speak on her topic since it's on the same topic. I just want the public to be aware that not every lot is owned by the city of Muskegon. The Muskegon County Land Bank does own a number of lots in the city of Muskegon, and sometimes they are owned by the land bank, so to just make sure that we're digging in and finding out specifically who owns said lot, because the Muskegon County Land Bank has different processes in place than the city of Muskegon does as far as how they sell their lots. Now, I'm sure that they're open to give the public their, I know they're working on revising their lot sale policy also at the land bank, but just that some lots are owned by the land bank and some are owned by the city.
I probably should have been clear when I made my comment. I'm talking specifically about properties owned by the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Cochen, you have a comment with regard to fiscal year 2026, State Revolving Fund Engineering Services?
No, I do, but I also have a comment regarding that, because I was going to say something very similar. In fact, I talked to Mr. or Director Ekholm to ask to get a meeting to discuss more, to learn more about how we can help our regular residents do this, because I was going through the packet and seeing basically blocks being bought up by developers from, not, not from Muskegon. And I know that there are residents who have come up to me and said that they wanted to buy property and they were not able to. So I would really like to see us look at that and figure out how we can help our residents.
City manager?
I do want to point out regarding our lot sale policy that it's, if it's a buildable lot, we're only going to sell it if there's someone who's going to build on it. And so if that's the case, then we should be getting back to those individual, but sometimes what we run into is folks want to buy it because it's been vacant, to hold it vacant, and that's not consistent with our lot sale policy.
I have a question, actually. Commissioner... When you get chance. It's okay? Okay. Yeah, thank you. And, and thank you, Commissioner Cochen for also addressing that, but Commissioner Keener for bringing that issue up, because this is an issue that has concerned me for quite some time. I've talked about this, where citizens in the community have, over the past, maintained these lots and also requested to buy lots, but due to the policy that came into effect, now they can't build on, I mean, purchase a lot because they have to build on it. But also, I'm still waiting for the list of unbuildable lots that are requested. So if the city manager, if you can get that to the commission, I appreciate that, because I think at our last meeting, Sam talked about there will be a list available for...
She has that. I think she said that anyone can stop buying, she'll review that with them.
Yeah, yeah, but due to the fact that...
May I ask you, is this something that you could speak on with regard to your items that you pulled?
I can speak on this one. Yeah, I can speak on that as well.
At that time?
Yeah, but this one is, which is in my ward, that's why...
Okay, because I know you've pulled two lot sale items as well.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm trying to move this forward, so if you could speak on, on your items with regard to lot sales, that topic, so that we can...
So this is something we can vote on, if we can be able to vote on this item here. Will it go back as a...
We're voting on consent agenda right now.
Okay.
And so this is inclusive of this item D. Doing this a little differently so that we could be more efficient tonight, given the number that were pulled. But we do still have E and F that you asked for pulling, which are regard to specific lots for sale. And it's my understanding, all of these lots, maybe not all of these, but item E and F were lots that we had previously approved for sale in the past. So this is an new sale.
Yeah, and for me, Manager Johnson, this item here, D, is about a resident that contacted me personally that had some concerns. So eventually, I would have pulled this off as well, and definitely not support it. So, um, eventually I would have pulled this off as well and definitely not supported it because of the fact that again, um, residents are.
Okay, then I'm, I'm going to. Please, I'm going to ask that the consent agenda be amended so that item D is also pulled separately from consent agenda.
Thank you.
Gracious. Could you please give your remark on item G so we can move forward approving the consent agenda?
So item, item G is in regards, uh, to funding that will be coming to the city of Muskegon and a couple of different areas. But specifically, I wanted to thank Mr. Manager and the city staff for, um, handling the situation nicely because, um, the city manager came to our neighborhood association meeting and he got grilled about the water and sewer, well, specifically the sewer lines. Um, and so we're just really thankful to see that that is coming to fruition. So thank you very much and for being patient and understanding.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochen. Uh, if there are no other remarks in regard to the items on our consent agenda, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cochen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Oh, she stepped out.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. Item C, limited traffic data software subscription, Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you. Uh, I move to authorize staff to enter into a three-year contract with Vertosoft LLC for twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars per year for subscription to Urban SDK Traffic Data Software.
Support.
Good motion by Commissioner Kilgo, supported by Commissioner Cochen. Good evening, chief.
Good evening. I'm Dan Vanderheide for the moment. He's all sick today, but this is a, uh, dual department, uh, request. So this is something that, um, I saw when I was, um, at a conference in, uh, Phoenix. Brought it back to, uh, city and just had some initial discussions, had some time to be able to play around with it. And then wound up, um, having some more discussions with, uh, Dan about it and the city manager. This limited data, traffic data is actually software that allows us both within, um, both of our departments to be able to have a good take on our traffic data as far as speed and volume. It does it by looking at, um, three different buckets. And what it does is these three different buckets ping every single vehicle that travels every three seconds. And that is just by the, um, distance and time method to get a speed and then the amount of vehi- vehicular traffic. So what that does is when we get a complaint of speed on Apple Avenue between such and such a street, we can look at this data and get real tr- real-time data as far as speed to the eighty-fifth percentile in that area. So we can effectively utilize our resources to, um, hopefully go out there and do some, uh, enforcement. It will also hel- help Dan's department on volume of vehicular traffic. This does not tell you who's in a particular vehicle. It does not tell you the different vehicles. It just tells you volume of traffic. Looking for approval, we'd like to do this on a, we believe it's going to be able to, uh, assist us in our communication with, especially with our department, communication with our constituents and with our citizens about the, the possible issues of speed within the city.
Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you, chief. Uh, I appreciate it. I, I, I do wish that we had more data like back when we made the Apple Avenue vote that we made, uh, to have more actual pinpoint data. Um, I know this will be like, um, the little tubes across the road, correct? It's not any visual data capture.
Nope, it's just, uh, with whatever is in your car that's being pinged by some satellite. You know, your, your devices that are in all our cars from two thousand and seven forward.
Okay, so I'm confused. So it is metadata then? So this program is like, we all have these mobile computers that we travel with. It's metadata is just saying, hey, a cell phone went by at two thirty-five P M?
Vehicular, not cell phone.
Okay, well, not all vehicles have like the advanced electronics in them.
Those won't be captured.
Okay, so twenty-six thousand dollars a year for us to capture data? If we did capture enough data on, uh, speeding vehicles? Can you tell me right now that the Muskegon Police Department would enforce speeding more on streets like Apple Avenue?
If you give me about eight to ten more officers, I would gladly do that specifically. It would definitely allow us to be able to do a lot more concerned traffic enforcement in areas. It will also allow us to be able to determine the actual time of those.
I understand. I'll just share my opinion. Twenty-six thousand dollars because we, we, it looks like we passed a raise for our officers on consent. I absolutely love that. Twenty-six thousand dollars, not enough to pay for one officer for a year. But I'd rather take twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and put it towards another officer than this particular system. That's just my opinion. But thank you very much.
If, if I may?
Yeah.
The amount of time that we put into the putting out our traffic, you know, sign to show speed for our officers to be out there in random times, I think you can calculate the amount of time that, and, um, cost that it is for that, that this would help us reduce that time and then we can have those officers doing, handling calls, being able to do those other things. I think it, uh, uh, it's, that twenty-six thousand is spent, it will be spent easily.
Thank you.
And, and just for clarification on that, uh, point, uh, this is not coming out of the general fund where the police budget comes out of. This, this will be out of budgets two oh two and two oh three, um, which are major and local roads. Um, so we wouldn't be able to use that twenty-six thousand for police.
And the other thing, just to caveat, is that, um, we are struggling to retain police officers. It's not that we don't have the funding for police officers. And so that's, that's the dilemma. But having this tool will help us be more efficient with the limited policing capacity that we have. Um, so we'd be more targeted and, and responsive to the worst offending areas and at the optimal times of doing so. Commissioner Cochen, did you second this motion?
I did, yes.
Commissioner Cochen, please.
Um, thank you, Chief Kozel. Uh, I wanted to ask in regards to also in the, in the cost, have we looked at how much it would save us if we utilized this equipment versus doing traffic studies for major projects? Or do we still have to also spend the additional funds for the traffic studies?
Cooper to the city manager on that one.
Um, so oftentimes the traffic studies for major projects are done by the development. Um, that's usually a cost that's incurred by them. This is not a traffic study. Um, MDOT's very clear that this does not, um, rise to that level. It gives us actionable data so that we can understand in real time, uh, where things are going. But because of the fact of, that basically you're looking at cars from two thousand and five and newer, um, that would have this type of information in roughly, there might be a couple of a little bit older. Um, you're not going to have a complete universe picture that the, um, the state would require for a traffic study.
And, um, I don't know if this is a question to you, Mr. Manager, or a question to you, Chief Kozel, but, uh, would that include motorcycles and, uh, like scooters?
Um, my guess is motorcycles might probably not scooters, but I don't know about the technology that's in scooters, to be totally honest with you.
It's, it's pretty dumb.
Okay. So, um, but yeah, most motorcycles, to the best of my knowledge, have pretty similar electronic stuff to, um, cars. They have radios, they have, um, other things that transmit information, so.
In, in regards to the roads fund, because you said it comes out of the roads fund, correct? Um, and this is a subscription that we'd be approving for three years. So it's more looking closer to eighty thousand dollars, um, total. And what impact can you say that would have on potential future road projects? Are we looking?
It, it'll have a, a very negligible impact on road projects. Uh, so we get, uh, road funding through major roads, uh, from the state. Uh, we did receive an increase, uh, in the most recent state budget, um, going into state roads. Uh, that money also from major rolls into local roads. Uh, so this isn't going to have a substantial impact on repaving or milling fills and things of that nature. The cost to do one of those projects, um, is, uh, in the mid to high six figures. Uh, so this, this isn't going to have a substantial impact on that.
I just know we have a lot of potholes that could be filled and I'm questioning how many potholes could be filled for eighty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochen. Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Thank you. Um, this is probably for, uh, the city manager to answer. Um, earlier today, you gave me an example of what this could be useful for when I asked you. There's a resident that lives in a neighborhood that there's a stoplight and they feel like that stoplight is not, um, an effective, uh, traffic control system. It doesn't need to be there. Um, and you suggested that one of the ways that, um, we could monitor whether that stoplight is, um, a good use of, of traffic control is by this sort of system.
Yeah, and this was, um, when, when you brought that question to my attention and, um, I talked to Director Vanderheid about it. He said this is exactly the type of tool that we would be able to utilize to determine if that, if that's still a needed stoplight in that particular location and how it impacts traffic. The other cool thing about this project or about this software is, is that we can layer in additional data that we get whether, uh, we change environments, you know, add speed bumps, change speed limits, things of that nature, and show how that impacts traffic as well. And then that helps the, um, traffic department and public works make more informed decisions when we're doing road projects about what the best use of our dollars is going forward in those areas. Because we did, you know, X, Y, and Z on road A and we were trying to get outcome three and it worked. So if, if we do that same thing over here in a similar environment, we can determine that there's going to be a similar outcome. So this, this is a useful tool, um, for, for planning and things of that nature.
So this would be something that would allow us to look at the whole city all at once.
Correct, yes. We can, um, in the demo, uh, that, uh, the chief and the mayor and I, uh, sat through and, and this is something that, uh, Director Vanderheid has also, uh, looked at as well. Uh, we were able to put various factors, uh, into the software to determine, uh, you know, what roads we had where people were exceeding, uh, the speed limit, uh, outside of the eighty-five percentile. And then we were able to determine which areas we had, um, you know, the most speeding in or the most likely where accidents would, could possibly occur, high-risk areas, things like that.
And this will show us where bottlenecks and backups happen in the summertime with the flow of traffic and help us to make plans around that for future improvements?
Sure, and it'll, yeah, it, it'll give us a lot of different data depending on, on what we're looking for. And it's, it's, it's a pretty robust tool and I think that Director Vanderheid, um, Chief Kozel and I are all pretty impressed with how it worked. Um, and just because of the value that it brings from a planning standpoint as a planning tool for, um, for the, uh, highway department, that's the reason that we're putting it into the roads. But, um, public safety would still be able to take advantage of it and see like, okay, we're getting complaints about speeding on this stretch of road. Let's pull up the real-time data and analyze what's happening, um, in pretty quick succession.
So then you could deploy a car to that neighborhood instead of just by, by chance, finding the right neighborhood? I think a lot of times people's perception of how fast the traffic is going and how fast the traffic is going aren't always aligned. So, um, you know, if you're standing on the side of the road, it feels like every car that's going by is going by really fast, even if it's going two miles over the speed limit. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor St. Clair. Anything else to ask or add on this topic, commissioners, before we go to vote? All right, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Hmm, no.
Commissioner Keener?
Yeah.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochen?
No.
Mission passes.
Thank you. All right, next item is D. Uh, before we get on with this, I just want to, uh, share that we have eight more items that were pulled from consent agenda. Uh, so let's be as economical as possible with our comments and questions. Because even if we do fifteen minutes each, that's putting us at two hours and we're bumping up against ten o'clock and we still have general public comment and a closed session. Um, so item D, Commissioner Keener or German, whichever wish, one you wish to take this item.
No, I.
I'll give it to you, Commissioner German. You wanted to, you wanted to vote no on it, so that's how you pulled it.
Well, and have some discussion as well. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I move to authorize staff to sell the city-owned vacant lot at six seventeen, six twenty-five and six thirty-five oak to Jada Homes and Properties LLC, Derek Jada.
Support. All right, motion by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Kilgo. Uh, good evening, sir. Please report out on this item.
Sure, Mike Franzek, uh, planning director. Uh, I would just like to mention that both, uh, items D and E, the sale of six seventeen, six twenty-five and six thirty-five oak and six thirty-eight and six forty-four oak were already approved for a lot sale, uh, in July of this year. And, um, the developer was anticipating Mishda, uh, Michigan Neighborhood Grant Funds to be dispersed. Uh, however, there was an issue with that transfer not being approved. So the developers would still like to develop on these lots, but, uh, they're going to have to look for different funding sources. Um, we have Karen Novak here that can explain a little bit what that funding issue is. So what they need to do, instead of having this approved as one lot sale with the five lots, they need to break this up into two separate lot sales and do it over.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner German.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Director Franzek. I'm reason for pulling this off and I'm, I'm seeing as, uh, Commissioner Keener addressed a lot of these lots being sold and residents not being able to buy them. I understand the policy that we passed years ago. And I think there should be some changes also to that policy and that's something that could be addressed later. But due to the fact that I'm getting calls from now residents and my constituents about, um, some that had inquired about these properties and then not able to, uh, purchase them. I just wanted to bring this to the commission's attention. And that, um, due to the mass, uh, uh, development that's going on in the community now in the area of the Angel area, which is the ward that I, uh, oversee. Residents are not really happy about the housing choices and the types and their concerns about, um, renters, you know, living in these apartments or these duplexes, had a constant turnover. Um, the change of culture also, um, changing because most of them are, um, homeowners. But also looking at the fact that we did a study on housing in assessment needs. And we still have people that's homeless, not being able to even rent these apartments due to the economic hardship. So, I mean, there's some things that need to be considered and addressed. Um, nothing against the developers or anything like that. I promote, you know, um, a business-friendly, um, attitude. But I have to look at the concerns of my constituents, people in the community that's homeless and not able to even afford apartment or a duplex or a house. So, um, that's the reason I'm pulling this off and, um, due to that concern, I can't support this.
Hey, Commissioner German? Commissioner Kilgo, anything to ask or add at this time?
Yes, I do. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Franzek, are you familiar with the adopt a lot policy?
Yes.
Um, in a short stint, if I adopted a lot from the city of Muskegon, hey, it's next door, right? It's right in my neighborhood. I don't want it to get out of control. I adopt it or my nonprofit adopts it and I take care of it. Is there stipulation on our adopt a lot policy that says, hey, at any time the city might end up selling this lot?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I am also familiar with that and, um, uh, our housing study still shows that we're well under our needed houses in the city of Muskegon. Would you say that that's correct as well? And then I guess my third thing, um, I, we have to, we have to separate a, a couple of things in my opinion. We have to separate homes that are being built, whether they're single-family rentals, uh, or other condos or something from the homeless. Because if we build homes for our homeless, it would literally have to be a special. we build homes for our homeless, it would literally have to be a special section of the city that we find and build some sort of homeless encampment, because you can't build single-family homes specifically for the unhoused, because they would be in and out, and they wouldn't be able to afford it with the cost of how much it costs to build a home right now. So we definitely still have a problem with our unhoused. I actually just brought together two nonprofits here in our community who are gonna start with thirty-four beds. So they're gonna be able to house some folks, and then they're gonna build from there to try to house some more of our unhoused folks here in the city. But I also do have a question for the developer since they're on a few of these items.
Yeah, they're here for any questions. I do believe these are subsidized as well, so she could speak on that.
Yes, if you kindly come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Evening. My name is Karen Novak, and I'm here on behalf of Sharda Homes, and I...
Thank you, Ms. Novak. Commissioner Kilgo.
Hey, it's just me. You got your water. We're good.
I know.
Everything. All right, we're ready. We're ready to go.
Just had some sugar. We're good.
That's what I like to hear. Hey, can you tell me a little bit, these, are these the same as the ones that are kind of behind Health West, or are these gonna be different? Can you tell me a little bit about the development and what you're building with these?
Absolutely. So these three originally were requested to be purchased with another two that were right across the street. It was originally intended, and we had a lot of support. We requested the My Neighborhood. It's just frozen. It's it's in this, you know...
Kind of frenzied that the whole federal government's having.
Yeah, it's, they're just not releasing the funds. Nobody has been granted those funds. So we would love to be able to utilize them. We're working with Sam and Jake in finding some additional parcels that could be an opportunity for those funds at a later date. We were requesting to make these changes today because I actually, I did meet with some of the neighbors, and I have talked with them. Originally, this was requested to purchase three of the parcels right there. They're they're three different shapes, and we had requested in our first July meeting to have those combined and split into four, where we would have four duplexes right next to each other. We're actually requesting that instead of having four right next to each other, we keep the three parcels and have them equal. It'll be spread out a little bit more so that it does feel a little bit more like the neighborhood. You'd have about sixty-nine feet of road frontage with a stacked duplex, which looks exactly like the house across the street. It's a two-story, nice traditional home looking, and I think it'll meet the neighbors' needs better. It won't be directly on top of each other. It also won't, it just won't look cookie cutter. It's going to have a little more variation. So I think it'll meet the needs, and it it does look like the ones that are right behind Health West. You can see there's one already up, and you'll be able to drive by that and see what that kind of traditional look of these duplexes are.
Awesome. I will definitely have to drive by and look at those. I haven't seen them yet. So question about the rental. Who are your target renters, leasers for for this property?
Absolutely. So these are, in our original requests and others, we have requested the pilot agreement. We would request that again, and that would come through, just like we did the first time. That is for one hundred and twenty percent AMI and below. So it is for our workforce housing. I do have a few figures here. So when we think of workforce housing, I I think it's, I have to break it down a little bit so that I can have like a visual thought of who would be in this and who could actually afford this. So these duplexes are eleven hundred square feet. They're three-bedroom, three-bathroom, and they were designed to meet the needs of three generations. Or, you know, sometimes it's a single parent with two children that are different, you know, a boy and a girl. You need to have three rooms in that scenario. So this was an easy floor plan to accommodate multiple needs. And breaking it down, if we have a family of three, at the current rate request, it would be the eighty percent AMI is the actual average median income with that that rental rate. If you had a family of four, it would actually be seventy percent AMI that we're serving with the average rental rate. So if we're breaking that down, I kind of have it written here because I like having those numbers in front of me. So if there was two adults in that home, whether that be, you know, a grandparent and a parent and children, or two parents and a child, if you had two full-time workers, they would need to average fourteen dollars and nineteen cents per hour as a full-time worker to meet that seventy percent AMI or eighty percent AMI at the rental rates that we're requesting. So we are requesting the pilot, which is one hundred and twenty percent, but we're actually targeting the seventy to eighty percent market, which is a higher need, and I believe a higher population in the community. Also, for that accessory dwelling unit, that's the single one-bedroom, one-bath, you walk straight in. That one, it actually meets, at our current rental rate, fifty-five percent AMI for a single person, if it's a single-family member. That single person making fifteen dollars and eighteen cents per hour full-time could make that payment, and that payment would be less than thirty percent of their income. Also, if it was two individuals in that small accessory dwelling unit or a couple, those two individuals, it would meet fifty percent average median income. And if those two individuals each worked part-time, twenty-five hours per week, they would, with the minimum wage of twelve forty-eight, they would be able to afford that rental request on their salary with it being real lower than that thirty percent of their income. So that's kind of our target range. The larger units are that seventy to eighty percent AMI.
I have a quick question and then one last comment. Giving those numbers, do you have a range of whether it was the ADU, the one-bedroom, or the three-bedroom, eleven hundred square feet? Do you have a rent range, like the actual numbers?
Yes.
Can you share those?
Yep. So for that seventy percent AMI for a family, that's fourteen thirty-five for a three-bedroom, three-bath. For eighty percent average median income, family of three, that'd be fourteen seventy-six a month. And I think that if we can find additional grant fundings and different options, we would love to meet lower forty, fifty, sixty percent AMI. It's just really difficult to do that without some type of surplus other than that. I mean, the property taxes are amazing. That's the only way that's working.
Yeah. So, so my brother rents a house in the city of Muskegon, small two-bedroom, older, probably built in the forties house, two-bedroom, maybe eight hundred fifty square feet, something like that. He pays twelve seventy-five a month for a two-bedroom. So a brand-new construction, three-bedroom, eleven hundred square feet is gonna be more expensive. But I'm sure that being new and nice, that there will be those working-class folks that will look to to get into those once they're up and built. So, and this is covering six seventeen, six twenty-five, six thirty-five, which is item D. Just for clarification, because it's the same builder, also E for six thirty-eight and six forty-four, all the same information on, it's the same?
Correct. The E, six thirty-eight and six forty-four, those are deeper lots.
Okay.
And so we're hoping to build the...
Do the ADU with those ones?
Yes. And the ADU would have also a two-bed, one-bath. We're working on a new floor plan that, because that's a deeper lot, we're able to actually go one hundred and sixty feet back. And so it really kind of creates its own little two-bed, one-bath home in the back corner.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Hey, Commissioner Kilgo. Any other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner German, one follow-up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ms. Novak, is it? Okay, welcome. I've seen your projects, and also one on Allen Street, right across from Health West. Talked about that one earlier this year. And my concern is with my constituents, and I hope you understand this in my base, because we're in a housing crisis here. And I just feel feel that even though we're trying to address the housing needs, everyone is not included in that. And that we understand that people come from different walks of life, different backgrounds, and things like that. Due to the government shutdown, I'm hearing concerns about people losing their jobs, living paycheck to paycheck. And as we pass these bills, I I mean, these proposals on these item agendas, you know, sometimes people need to be mindful that sometimes you can only be one or two paychecks from being bankrupt or homelessness. It can happen to anybody. On this note, given the fact that these apartments will not be affordable to people in, of residents in my ward, and have some concerns. And then issues with, you know, not being able to purchase those lots under the Adopt-A-Lot policies, which I'm familiar with, and because I voted on that. But, and I think those policies should be updated as well. This is the reason why I'm opposed to this. So it's nothing directed towards you or anything like that. I just want you to personally know that. When it comes to developers, trying to enhance and beautify our city, you know, I'm always, you know, open to that, so.
Absolutely. And to address that, too, I a hundred percent agree. I'd love to be able to get these lower. I'd love to be able to offer them at a better rent rate. I think the ideal part with this specific one is, you know, I do think a lot of the neighbors and community, I do think a lot of them would have a two-adult working home where they would both be making fourteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. And I know that fourteen hundred and thirty-five dollars is a big number, but surprisingly, that's that's the actual math on that, is in order to have it as thirty percent of your income, you'd need two adults in the home making that fourteen dollars and nineteen cents an hour. I'd love to find some grant funding and different ways to lower the cost. I think also, to address kind of the conversation and and the concern, Commissioner Keener, too, with with sharing that there's so many of these requests for these parcels under not-local developers. What I would share with that is, you know, we had two, two other large purchases, which was within NEZ, and probably twelve to thirteen lots each. Those were going to be built for single-family homes and then sold with the NEZ, which is really, really needed, and we're participating in that side as well. But I think the reason you see us on the agenda often is because it is small incremental builders. So they may not live in Muskegon, but they serve Muskegon. These are contractors who work here and serve the community, and they have for decades. And we're on the commissioner agenda quite often because we're only buying two or three at a time, because it's a, it's nine different small incremental builders who are doing one to three each. They can't afford to do a huge development and request twenty parcels all at once. So you'll probably see us a little bit more, but that's because it's, it's smaller. It's all the same, I will say it is all the same kind of floor plan, but that's because we need economy of scale to build economically and save on cost. We're doing our best to make the front porch look nicer or offset it a little bit differently on each parcel so that it fits with the block that it's on. But it is very intentional to be part of the community. I'm also working with some contacts with Flywheel Housing Next and Mishta to see if we can find a program where the NEZ can marry the pilot, and we can have an actual homeowner in that main floor of that duplex who can rent out the upstairs and rent out the accessory dwelling unit. And we're working really hard to find something statewide where it can be our neighbors in our community who's buying this duplex and renting out the upstairs and and the ADU, or living in the ADU and renting out the duplex. It will allow homeowners to get into a market that they are not able to access right now, because it'll allow them to use seventy percent of the rental income from both of those other units to support their home and their housing and their mortgage. So I'm definitely working on multiple solutions to a very big problem, and I I just appreciate your time and and your questions, but I understand the concerns.
Thank you. Yep, and I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, you have something to add?
Yeah, it's the, I want to thank Ms. Novak for coming and answering these questions. I I also want to make sure that I stress for the commission that we're following policies that the commission has put in place as we go through and sell these properties and work with developers, and that if if there's a concern about the policies that we have in place, we we do have LPC meetings where we can have these discussed to see if if there's a change that needs to be made. But the, what's coming before us tonight is what the commission has told us you want us to be doing. And this, and and these are the type of projects that you have told us you want to see happen. And so that that's why we put these on the agenda for the sale.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate you reiterating that or emphasizing that. Yeah, the lot sale policy, coincidentally, was just updated not even a month ago. So it did come before us, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the commission voted to update and approve the lot sale policy at that time. So if there were further ideas for changing it, it would have been welcomed at that time. And these particular lots that we are voting on right now were unanimously approved for sale on July eighth, twenty twenty-five. So just five months ago, sixteen months ago, five, four, I'm struggling now with math, but yes, just back in July. Safer, Commissioner Keener should have not able to be at that meeting. So I don't want to include her in the unanimous of that. But as Mr. Manager was saying, this is very much aligned with what we are trying to do in terms of housing. This is what we've done with the zoning reforms. This is taking advantage of zoning reforms to create new housing opportunities. This is taking advantage of pilot and the tools at our disposal so that we can create increased housing capacity in our community. The way that we're going to be able to bring down prices is by increasing supplies and having a wide variety of housing options. And I very much appreciate that we do have these small-scale incremental developers that are looking to construct in our community, and not just constructing. It's completely understandable. You have a few select floor plans, because that's how you're able to get greater efficiencies and try to bring down the cost. But that you are also being mindful of tweaking it. So it's not just cookie cutter, cookie cutter, cookie cutter next to it. And also that you've engaged with the neighbors to have those conversations, to meet them, to hear from them, and then evolve your development plans so that it does better reflect the surrounding community in terms of how you're developing. And that I really appreciate that you're targeting that seventy to eighty percent AMI with this, because you could easily gone to one hundred and twenty percent AMI on this. And so to be able to have three-bedroom houses with three bathrooms to provide for working families in our community, and at that seventy to eighty percent of the AMI, that that's our community. That's our community in this surrounding area of where these houses are being developed. So I really appreciate that emphasis on that seventy, eighty percent right there, and having new quality, multi-bedroom, multi-bathroom housing developments right there, and taking advantage of the zoning reforms that we've recently completed. So, thank you. I understand this was just a necessity of, you know, financing hiccups that required this to be broken up into new agreements. And we appreciate your perseverance with this, because like I said, this had been approved unanimously before. You had some roadblocks, but you didn't give up. You worked around them, and you're coming back for our blessing to make the changes. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. All right, next item, E, sale of six thirty-eight, six forty- oak. Commissioner German.
All right. I move to authorize staff to sell the city-owned vacant lot at six thirty-eight and six forty-four oak to Jada Homes and Property LLC, Derek Jada.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Kilgo. Please introduce yourself once more and kindly report on this item.
Mike Franzek, Planning Director. This is related to the last item. These are the remainder of the properties that are being split up and resold.
Thank you. So same situation, just another half of what had been approved back in July. Commissioner German?
Yes, I really don't think there's any need to go and have any further discussion. That's already been brought to our attention, so I'm okay.
Thank you, Commissioner German. Commissioner Kilgo, anything to ask her out at this time?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, shout out to the Director of Development Services and his entire team. I've sat with Jake and different people and on his team. And one thing that he does in his department, he works with... And one thing that he does in his department, he works with developers and builders of all sorts of backgrounds, color, race, experience. So he's worked with developers that literally they're building their first house ever and they build it right here in the city of Muskegon. Two builders that have, you know, a ton of experience and they built all over Michigan or all over the the country. So the way that he works with some of the builders that are, I would just, I guess I'll say this. I would encourage anyone who's listening or to tell people who have a desire to build in the city of Muskegon, set up a meeting with the Development Services Team because they are willing to work with everyone here that wants to come and contribute in the city of Muskegon.
You're here. Thank Commissioner Kilgo. Commissioners, anything else to ask for at this time before we get a vote? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener? Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, sale of five ninety five oak and five ninety four orchard. Commissioner German.
Oh, nice. Me too. Let's see. All right. I move to authorize staff to sell city-owned vacant lot at five ninety five oak, five ninety four orchard to Sue and Properties LLC.
Support.
All right. We motion by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Cochen. Welcome back.
Mike Franzak, Planning Director. So this is another smaller developer we're working with on developing a duplex on each one of these lots. They're also looking at building ADUs in the back for a total of six units.
Thank you, Director Franzak. Commissioner German.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And good evening again, Director Franzak. Is the developer present today?
Karen is here to represent the.
Oh, okay. Okay. If she could speak on behalf of this project also, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you kind of come back to the podium?
So Sue and Properties, they they are a contractor in the area. So Eric Payne, he is a contractor. He does a lot of renovations and flips. This is the first kind of do that he is doing for an actual development for long-term rentals here. But he's been working in the community, supporting renovations for homeowners. Usually he just does residential, but he knows Derek Sharda and learned that Derek Sharda was building for several smaller, you know, developers who are just starting. And he thought, it's extremely hard to be able to cash flow and create good quality housing for a community unless you have kind of a a process, a step, economy of scale. And we're able to do that here. And so we went and drove twenty different lots and we went and talked to neighbors and these are a nice wider lot and they actually back up to each other. So it shares a back parcel line. And he just thought it was a really great area to to have his first build.
Yeah, okay. And does this fall under the same AMI formula?
It does.
Okay.
It does. So that that accessory dwelling unit, like I had mentioned, for, you know, that if it was for fifty-five percent for fifty-five percent AMI for a single individual, fifty percent AMI for a family or a household of two. And so that it's about seven seventy-five. And then the duplex would be for the seventy percent AMI to eighty percent AMI.
Okay. And that's all I have. I I just like the idea of you forecasting what you're trying to do in the future to make homes really affordable to meet that price point for people that really can't afford a higher AMI bracket. So thank you.
And I will share too, just briefly, I know you have a full agenda, so I won't take up your. But I have applied for additional grants that would allow us. We have to put twenty or twenty-five percent down. We all have a mortgage. So really, these rates are based off of what can we cash flow to pay our mortgage and keep a good quality home and also meet the need of these, you know, seventy to eighty. So that's the that's the why behind it. I I wish I could offer all of these much lower, but to cover my mortgage, that's literally the numbers that is kind of the sweet spot is that seventy to eighty percent average median income. Hopefully, some additional grant opportunities can come through to meet the thirty percent average median income and below. There is some really exciting opportunities that are coming about, so we're we're hoping to to utilize that for for future.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner German. Commissioner Cochen, anything to ask for?
No, I do not.
All right, Commissioners, anything else to ask for? No? All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appreciate you joining us this evening, Ms. Novak. All right. Item H, Beach Pass Online Discount. Commissioner Kilgo.
I move to approve a four dollar discount for patrons who purchase annual beach passes to the new portal. Would I add in here?
Yeah, we I do notice that we should probably add in and three dollar discounts for daily passes purchased on the portal because that was the other caveat. And that probably should be reflected here as well.
And three dollar discount.
Whether or not you want to add the BOGO. We can take this motion as is and then amend it, whether friendly or otherwise. Or if you want to figure out the language to include in your motion.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah, I I'd like to do it right now, add in the changes to approve a four dollar discount for patrons who purchase an annual and a three dollar discount for patrons who purchase a daily and set up a time to implement our BOGO sale for annual passes for next season.
Support. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Kilgo, supported by Commissioner German, and I confirm so we we're just essentially saying we want a BOGO and we're leaving it to staff to determine the the particular parameters of that come December or whenever.
Correct. I'm I'm definitely open to the commission as far as timelines or whatever, but.
I just want to make sure.
I leave it to, yeah.
The the more broad.
Correct.
Language. Okay, cool. All right, the motion to prove the four dollar discount for patrons who purchase any beach passes as well as three dollar discount on daily passes purchased on the portal while authorizing or requesting staff move forward with BOGO.
Yeah, I think our intent would be to do it for the month of December.
Okay, Commissioner Kilgo.
I I don't have any.
Anything to, okay.
Nothing to add.
Who? I'm sorry, I lost it. It was. Commissioner's German. As a supporter of that motion, do you have anything to ask for?
No, not at this juncture. I would just question with the BOGO. Is that something that needs to be done before the end of the year or can we discuss that at the?
So our our intent would be to do it during the month of December.
Okay, okay.
It would be for the BOGO. So it would end on our last day of work in December.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else to ask for, Commissioners? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cochen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, I rezoning of five six zero Mark Street from Waterfront Marine to Waterfront Industrial PUD District. Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you. I move that the request to rezone a portion of the property at five sixty Mark Street from Waterfront Marine to Waterfront Industrial PUD be approved.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kilgo, supported by Commissioner Cochen. Welcome back there.
Hello, Mike Franzak, Planning Director. I'd just like to note that this is a portion of the property going to be rezoned, a little over half of the northern portion would rezone from Waterfront Marine to WIPUD. The type of uses that they currently have in this section of the property are pretty consistent with the Waterfront Industrial PUD zoning designation. So there really wouldn't be much of a change in activities there. I would also just like to point out that the entire land swap project helps us achieve many of the goals that we have in a lot of our plans, such as the master plan and the Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan. I've listed out the several different occasions for where it would help us out meeting certain goals.
Thank you, Director Franzak. Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you. Director Franzak, whether whether or not this the land purchase for Fisherman's Landing goes through or not. If it did not go through, you would see Mart Dock request this PUD change to Mark Street.
Yeah, I believe so. It's not entirely tied just to the project.
Right.
It's something that they've discussed in the past. They're currently doing these type of operations. So I I believe it's something that they, I don't want to speak for them, but I believe it's something that they probably would request without the the project swap.
Gotcha. And in our packet, it shows what they can do and what they can't do. So they can't like have hazardous materials and store, you know, certain things there. So it's not like they're going to be able to have new rules to be able to do like dangerous things that they're not already doing right now.
Correct. And if they would like to do anything that differs from their current operations, something that is allowed within that WIPUD, it is a PUD, so it would have to come to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and then to the City Commission for a vote.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilgo. Commissioner Cochen.
Yes, thank you very much, Director Franzak, for updating us on this. The question I have in regards to the rezoning here, this is not something that the Mart Dock operators have requested. Is that correct?
No, this was this was a request.
It wasn't correct. Okay. I thought I heard you say earlier that it wasn't. So I wanted to confirm that that was something that was requested. So just for everybody at home, this is not the official vote on the land sale for Fisherman's Landing. This is merely rezoning of the Mart Dock. And then later on, we'll be talking about potentially rezoning Fisherman's Landing, but it is not the sale in any capacity, correct?
That is that is correct, just a rezoning.
Okay, thank you. The the uses here, would this put the Mart Dock in compliance? Because right now they're they're currently zoned out of compliance, correct?
Yeah, they're considered legally non-conforming or what we call grandfathered.
So this will put them back in compliance or conforming?
For the most part, yes, they'll be in the right zoning designation. Technically, they would have to get that PUD approved to be considered legally conforming and not legally non-conforming. So whether or not they come back right away for a PUD amendment, they still enjoy those grandfathered rights. Once they get that approved as a PUD, then it becomes legally conforming.
Can you think of any reason why we would not want to do this?
I'm not sure. You know, staff is recommending approval for it. It seems consistent with our master plan and our our land uses and it opens up the possibility for the land swap, which helps us achieve many of the goals we have in our master plan.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I I unless I'm missing something, to me, this makes sense. There is zoning that happened back in the eighties, early nineties that was done against the wishes of the developer on that site. And I think that this kind of writes that wrong. So I I would be in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochen. Commissioners, anything else to ask for at this time? Commissioner German.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Director Franzak. This item here kind of segue into the next item where it creates opportunity for possible conditions to the, I would say, the agenda that the Mark Dock is looking to do for swapping and developing. If this is approved, what is the actual scope of this zoning going to do for the upcoming possibility of them attaining the Fisherman Landing property?
Well, first and foremost, what it does is it brings their current operations to conformance. And I believe once they have that, then they have the surety to go ahead with the land swap. In case that were not to work out, then they would at least be granted the rights to which they're currently using the property for.
And that's right on Third Street, that area there.
Well, this portion of the property. The the property is a U shape. It goes around that harbor or Third Street area and everything on this request is to the west of that U shape. So it's just this leg, not the other leg.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could pull up.
Could you go to that area to be rezoned?
There we go. So it's just the highlighted in yellow, the twenty-three and a half acres. So the Third Street wharf side would remain.
Mr. Manager, you have something to add?
To kind of add on to what Director Franzak was saying, the and and how these things relate. One of the questions that we've got throughout this process is why can't Mart Dock do the development on their current site? And as Director Franzak was pointing out, they're they're a grandfathered, non-conforming use. As part of zoning, you can't make a property more non-conforming. So you can't expand the uses on there unless they're already there. And since some of the things that they're looking to do on the Fisherman's Landing site would be more containerized operations and things like that, that's not a current operation on the site. So this is, as the director is pointing out, sort of an insurance policy that if if the development agreement was not to go forward, the zoning would be proper at the Mart Dock site itself to allow them to move forward with grant applications and plans on this site where they've operated for a century.
And does that include what type of development or operations?
The.
Principal uses are water, transportation, freight, railroad and auto passenger ferries, marine cargo handling, loading, unloading and stevedore facilities, marine terminal uses, including ancillary intermodal transportation operations, any use with outside storage of aggregate limestone, coal, slag, salt, sand or other bulk materials shipped by commercial watercraft vessels and/or barges, grain elevators, Balkan warehouse storage of goods shipped by commercial maritime vessels, towing and tugboat services for commercial freight water vessels, barge fleeting, mooring and servicing, lighterage, commercial engine and hull repair, marine dock, breakwater, harbor construction and repair contracting, marine dredging contractors, palletizing, decanning, container stripping and packing operations associated with maritime shipping and transport, bulk liquid facilities and non-hazard materials, material recovery facilities that are entirely contained in buildings, commercial fishing facilities, manufacturing that is dependent on port facilities, any other uses which meet the intent of this district as deemed by the Planning Commission and the City Commission, except that in no case shall a prohibited use be permitted. Now, there's a number of accessory uses as well that are contemplated. But those are the principal permitted uses.
And these are operations that's already being done right now.
No, not all of those are being done right now, but a good.
A poor, good, large portion of them, yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner German.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners, anything else to ask for at this time? Okay, thank you. So this had come to the Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission, I did vote no on making a recommendation for the City Commission to approve it with the caveat that when it comes to the commission, there may be rationale for me to approve it at that time. Part of that rationale is connected to the development agreement that's been contemplated with regard to Fisherman's Landing and Mart Dock. That updated development agreement has not been brought to us at this point. I have not reviewed it or seen it. And so therefore, lacking that information, I am abstaining on this particular vote. I happened, as I said, at the Planning Commission meeting. I disagree with the assessment that this aligns with our long-term planning and development purposes envisioned for here. As was mentioned with regard to Imagine Muskegon Lake Plan, that plan does not contemplate port activities here. It talks about Port Innovation District on the Far East End, which is in alignment with our previous master land use plan that the city manager has repeatedly referenced in his presentations in terms of whatever long-term on development and land use plans are. And so because this particular zoning rezoning, in my estimation, goes away from the vision and the future we're trying to get to, that is why I voted no at the Planning Commission. But knowing that the development agreement is contemplating deed restrictions on this property to have it in alignment for mixed-use development, for mixed-use waterfront development, that's what I want to see and see that connected so that I have assurance that what we're moving forward is in alignment with what our long-term vision and development expectations are. And so without seeing that development agreement tied into this particular property and its use, I understand why the property owner wishes to see it rezoned as a. The property owner wishes to see it rezoned as a um, fail-safe, as a fallback in the event that this does not move forward, makes sense. Um, if this didn't move forward and they came back and said, hey, I want to rezone this, I would be ver- I'd be. Very likely inclined to support it in some, some degree of fashion, because I do very much support MarDoc's operations. And I support the port of Miskin remaining a working port, Miskin Lake remaining a working port, um, and accommodating those activities. But at this time, without the development agreement um, in hand, I will be abstaining on this particular rezoning. And I may very well be voting in favor of it in the future. So I wanted to give an explanation as to where I stand on this voting vote before we go to vote. Um, any final thoughts or follow-up? I see hands up. Commissioner Kilgo then Commissioner Kochin.
Yeah, um, mine is a question. So on votes in the past, we've been told that we can't abstain.
You can abstain when you, I specifically identified a lack of information. That's the one time you can abstain outside of uh, declaring a conflict of interest.
Sweet, thank you.
Commissioner Kochin.
I, I, I'm not accepting that answer quite as well because.
That's their commission policy.
I, I hear you, but I feel like in the past, um, there was somebody that came in like last minute. And they didn't even hear what we voted on and they had, we were, they were told they had to vote. So I, I guess I'm a little confused on that. I want to make sure that we're following the same rules every time.
You, can you specify the example?
Who it was, cause I don't remember, but I remember going, that seems strange and. Kind of asking, can I abstain on something that I don't know about and I was.
Well, if it was in your packet and you had all the materials, so if you came to the meeting and you were lacking specific information, you would need to identify what information you're missing. To abstain from the question. And so lack of being able to identify that specific information, no, you could not abstain.
Okay.
Further, if I might add to your comments, Mr. Man. Further, in this situation, the additional information cannot be provided yet. As opposed to it was in your pa- in your packet, you or had ample opportunity to, and, and I'm not saying you.
Right, yeah.
Each commissioner, you know, failed to exercise their opportunity to approach staff and get answers, et cetera.
Um, okay, just following up on that same thought. So in that vein. Should we be voting on J? Because we also have not seen.
No, J is, 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 we'll get to J when we get to J. So we're on I right now.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner German.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, to Commissioner uh, Coach and, and uh, Commissioner Kilgo's point. Come to abstaining and then also your point, Mayor, where um, you were privy to certain information that the commission.
No, I'm saying I don't have it. That's exactly what I'm saying. I don't have.
Oh, you don't have?
I do not have it. That's why I'm saying I am abstaining for lack of that information.
Thanks for that correction. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, all right.
All right, there's nothing else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kochin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
No.
Commissioner German?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, next item, J rezoning, and this will require a second read, so this will be coming back to the city commission for a, another read and vote. Uh, since it was not adopted by all seven members of the city commission. Um, item J rezoning of five zero one East Western Avenue from Open Space Recreation to Waterfront Industrial P U D.
This is related to the same um, land swap.
I'm sorry, one moment.
Just, just one moment. Commissioner Keener, could you kindly take this motion?
I move that the request to rezonate portion of the property at five oh one West Western Avenue. From Open Space Recreation to Waterfront Industrial P U D be approved.
Support.
Uh, just correction, East Western Avenue. Five oh one East Western, okay, understood. Five oh one East Western Avenue, motion by Commissioner Keener, supported by Commissioner Kilgo. Director Forensic, take it away.
Yeah, so this is related to the same project. Uh, again, this is just a portion of the property. This would be the northern. Portion of the property, uh, which will start at about. Giving, we will be rezoning about one and a half. If you could pull up the map, actually, it shows. About one and a half of the parking bays to the north would be rezoned. Area to be rezoned. There you go. Thank you. It'll be this area in red. Um, everything to the south there would remain. Open space recreation zoned and everything to the north would be the W I P U D. And um, this is under city ownership, so if the land swap did not take place. Uh, the city would still own it and have the ability to reason.
Thank you, Director Forensic. Commissioner Keener.
Yes, um, so this, um, I sit on planning and zoning and it's came before us. A few weeks ago for planning and zoning and I am adamantly against um, this rezoning right now. I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart or, yeah, the cart before the horse. Um, and additionally, if I feel like that. We're, we're planning something that our entire community is not backing and along and ready for the ride for additionally, um. I know we're just voting to rezone, but we're voting to rezone for the potential of a swap if we're gonna be quite honest. That's, that's what we're really looking to rezon. Um, not just for City of Miskin to do what they want to. If the swap does not go, we are rezoning for the intent of this swap. And I feel like that's the seediest for our citizens here that pay um, their taxes here. Um, I have other questions concerning the swap, but I'll, I'll refrain from. Talking on those because we're s- simply here for a rezoning process. But I just want my citizens, these citizens of Miskin, you know that I've heard your calls, I've heard your voicemails, your voicemails. And I recognize your emails and I am here to stand up for you all that are total, are totally against this rezoning. Again, for what I feel like is the purpose of a swap. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keener. Commissioner Kilgo.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Forensic. In this ask to this rezoning ask. I didn't see camping on the list of things that's on industrial P U D. The, that, uh, the waterfront industrial P U D. Is it, am I correct in that, that camping is not on the list of?
That's correct.
Okay, so I also have a problem with it because we're told. That if that potential future item that comes in front of us happens. The camping would remain at Fisherman's Landing. Until said time as a grant is received or not received. And if it wasn't received, camping would remain at Fisherman's Landing. So I also feel that this is putting the cart before the horse. Um, if we can rezone this parcel at any time after. It comes in front of us for future potential um, sales, purchases, swaps, whatever people want to call it. But if the public is being told that this will remain a campground while. Um. We're seeing if we can get grant money to move. Um, the entity to there, then I don't really s- it doesn't make sense to me to rezone it right now. Because it's supposed to remain a campground.
Well, the campground would be eligible to stay, even if we never rezoned it back. As long as you don't give up your use, even after it's been rezoned. Uh, you are legally non-conforming grandfathered in. So. Uh, we see that a lot with properties that rezone. And the owner does not want to relinquish their rights. They're able to do that into perpetuity until. Uh, they decide not to.
As long as this stays in operation and as long as it's not out of operations for more than two years, correct?
Yeah, that is a clause. Um, I think that's a tough one for us to enforce and, and maybe, you know.
Yeah.
Suit or something, but uh, we do have that in there. Um. If you're not giving up your rights, you usually are considered to stay grandfathered. We do have that clause about two years, though.
Um, and then my last question would be. Um, this can come to the, if something happened with the ownership of the red square that we see on our, our screen. This could come to the planning commission and then ultimately to the city commission at a later time. Is that correct?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Uh, if, if we did happen to make changes on the ownership of this part of that property. We could also rezone it at a later date, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, um, so this is part of the, the deal for the swap. That's not something that um. Staff has been trying to be secretive about in this process. Um, the, as the director pointed out, the grandfathered use would continue. One of the conditions of the swap and one of the reasons we're doing it in this fashion is that. Um, the rezone of Fisherman's Landing. Um, and the mart doc property would take simult- would take effect simultaneously. Um, with the approval of the development agreement, if the commission approves that development agreement. In order for us to hit that timeline, we have to start the rezoning process ahead of time and work through it. Um, so we presented uh, the development agreement uh, in a work session in October. We got feedback on that and we've made um, some substantial changes based on feedback that we got from the commission. On things that the commission would like to see um, in the development agreement to make it more um. Comfortable to move forward uh, and keep the process going. So this is just a step in the process to keep this going. Um, if we don't get unanimous um, support on this, then it moves to a second read. And then we can look at it moving forward to be um, considered for the second time in concert with. The development agreement. Um, if either one of those don't fail, then the development agreement does not move forward. So this is just preserving the process that, that we're moving forward through to. Um, ensure that when we come to that final vote, you'll be able to make the final decision on all parts of those together. This. Um, I don't anticipate that all seven of you would vote for this tonight. Um, but uh, if, if you did, then it, then it would go through or we would, you know. Hold off until that we get to that point, but the, because I'm not anticipating all seven would vote, we're, we're going through multiple. Um, we're anticipating going through multiple commission meetings of having this discussion and being able to hit both of those at the same time. That, that's why it's, that's why it's here tonight. The other part of this is. That part of the grant process that we need to go through. Is uh, requiring that the property that is being applied for is controlled by the applicant. And is properly zoned. Um, and so this would ensure that those two things happen together. And one of our concerns was that if, if we did the development agreement. Um, and then we had to do the rezone after the fact and we were continuing to prolong. Um, the discussions on these items, which, you know, the, these are great discussions about it. We've been having it for a year now. This is something that the commission had directed staff to, to work on and find a way forward on. And so it, it's logical to have both of these come at the same time, which is why we're doing this now. Cause this, cause of the process of rezoning is multiple meetings, not one meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, uh, any other? I think we had Keener then Kilgo. Any other questions or comments on that? Commissioner Kochin.
Yes, thank you. Um, so I also feel like I hear what. Mr. Manager is saying um, in the thought process, it's, it's very strategic in thought, but it still leaves us. Kind of doing exactly what we did to the mart doc in the late eighties, early nineties to Fisherman's Landing. And I'm not about to be voting on something to make. A property non-conforming, because if it doesn't pass or if it does pass. And they want to do expansions in the camping area, they're not gonna be able to do that if we change the zoning. So instead of doing more and more and more zoning, I, I would prefer to devote no for this.
Mr. Manager.
Um, so to, to respond to that, and I completely understand where you're coming from, but the, the, the difference here from the mart doc. Property is that the city owns this property. So if the development agreement was not to go through, the city would simply rezone this back. To its current zoning. Um, and so there wouldn't, the campground wouldn't be in the same situation. That the mart doc proper is in now. We're the property owners. Um, we're the one that initiated this, this rezone. And this has been what has been planned for this property for decades. And so we're just moving that process forward. If the development agreement doesn't go forward, we can in two meetings. Reverse that and bring it back to its current zoning. And even before the season was to start for twenty twenty-six, if this development agreement wasn't to go forward. So this is, because we're the property owners here, there's very little risk. To the future of the campground and the future of Fisherman's Landing if this agreement doesn't go forward. If we weren't the property owners here, then there, then I would agree that there would be some risk associated with it. But because we're the, we're the property owners, that risk is non-existent.
I, I do still feel like it is a little disingenuous and, and I don't think that the citizens appreciate it, but thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner Kochin. Commissioner German.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you again, Director Forensic. Um, on this item, um, I expressed my. Concerns and I'm still with constituents and residents in the community about. The uh, the opportunity to have an urban campground. Um, heard thoughts from each commissioners, the ones that spoke out about it. Um, and I share those sentiments as well as um, comments from um. Public participation. And I just really think, I'm looking at this, I've been down this road before, I've seen this. Uh, so this is nothing new to me when it comes to uncertainties. And I like facts, I like details. I like to see something tangible where there are guarantees and I don't see that. And I have not seen this uh, in this conversation. Due to the uh, work session that was um, just done in October at the high school. Um, there was little participation for as public comment. Uh, it was done through an app, but for residents and um. People there at the uh, meeting, they really didn't get a chance to speak out and address their uh, concerns. Also, the Jackson Hill Neighborhood Association meeting was on that same day. So they didn't even have any representation there um, are able to participate. So I, I just thought that was a disadvantage also. Um, I'd just like to see something that's concrete and guarantees. Um, and that's my reason because uh, we'll be going to a second hearing because I'm one on this commission that will not support this.
Thank you, Commissioner German. Any other Vice Mayor St. Clair?
So there has been a lot of very vocal public comment against this project. But I would disagree that it is largely citizens. I look up every single email that I get. To see where are they from. And it's not. It's not majority city residents. It's people who camp there and that is not majority city residents. Excuse my voice, by the way. Um, the feedback that I have gotten from city residents has primarily been supportive of this. There have been, I'm not discounting, there are definitely people who live in the city that do not support this. But unfortunately, the climate around this is intimidating for people to speak out supporting it. And there has been some really hostile engagement around this and frankly, people don't feel safe. To say that they support moving forward with something different. So. You know, I, I hear my fellow commissioners saying that they're hearing from their constituents that it's, it's not something that the citizens want. And I would push back on that because I am hearing from residents. More that they do want it and non-residents that they don't. So, and. I answer to my voting constituents, not the larger community. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor St. Clair. Uh, we've heard from everyone except for Commissioner Gorman, if you wanted anything to add or ask at this time?
Yes, I would also like to add, um, with the vice mayor, same thing, I mean, we were both actually with a resident earlier this weekend that. There was clear hesitancy about vocally supporting theirs and we did our best to just encourage them that their voice is heard equitably. Um, and I just, you know, want to add tonight. Um, and I just, you know, want to add tonight, it, to provide transparency to the public, we are having this conversation, uh, because we have directed staff to bring this to our attention tonight to vote, um, to move it forward. I am not privy to your private meetings with the city manager, however, you have access to the city manager constantly. Um, after the presentation of the first development agreement, I know you were given the opportunity to talk about moving forward or not. And we did, and that is why we are here today. Um, so I just feel like a fair presentation to the public about why we're having this conversation is important. I also feel like it's disingenuous to say there's not been opportunity for public engagement when those of us that were at the public engagement at the high school watched your city manager answer eighty-seven questions in ninety minutes, um, which has been tremendous public engagement. I really want to applaud the staff for that, giving opportunity for residents and non-residents of the city to answer almost a hundred questions in less than two hours. So I'm excited to vote this forward and I really just want to be transparent about why we're having this, um, vote tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman, Mr. Manager?
Um, and I just want to add, uh, one thing for clarification. So to keep this moving forward, we will need four votes. It doesn't do the rezone, it moves it forward to a second reading. If we do not get four votes to move it forward to a second reading, it calls into serious question about whether or not we'll even bring the development agreement forward for final consideration of which we've made a lot of effort and spent a lot of time working with the developer to put the changes in that the commission wants to see. Um, so the, a vote to do the rezone on this is not a vote to actually rezone it today, it's to bring it to a second reading. Um, if, unless all seven of you vote yes, which I don't think will happen. But if we need four votes to move that forward to a second reading, and at that point in time, when it comes for a second reading, we'll have the final draft of the development agreement for everyone to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate that additional context. Um, and I will be voting in favor of this particular rezoning. Um, you know, with caveat that my vote in favor of this does not necessarily guarantee a vote in favor of the development agreement that comes forward to us. Um, we, I've not yet seen the updated draft. You know, I shared some concerns, I shared, you know, some preferences and suggestions, um, after seeing the first version. Um, I look forward to, um, seeing the updated draft. My vote in favor of this is, is one, a recognition that this is our own property, that we can rezone it back, we need to. It's not going to disrupt camping activities there, camping will continue to be, uh, there whether it's zoned, um, as open space recreation or, or zoned as waterfront industrial PUD. Camping will continue there for the twenty twenty-six season and potentially beyond. Um, that I will be voting in favor of this and one, uh, two, to, for those reasons, but also to demonstrate an openness to continuing consideration of that development agreement that, that, that will be brought forward to us. Um, but the other thing is I, I want to read so is to, to distinguish between why I abstained on the previous one and in voting in favor of this one, the waterfront industrial PUD, uh, district, planning unit development district. That district is intended, and this is the preamble from when we first adopted this and created this particular zone. We created with intentionality this PUD zone, or PUD district for this area of the lake. Um, this district is intended to promote the consolidation of commercial port activities at the eastern terminus of Muskegon Lake because of its proximity to the interstate, established industrial uses and isolation from residential zones. The intent is to localize this district, promote symbiotic relationships among industrial port activities and to discourage the expansion of such activities elsewhere along Muskegon Lake frontage. And so that's why I had reservations standalone, making the rezoning for, for Mart Dock because that is, um, enabling that activities elsewhere along the lake whereas our zoning is calling for it to be consolidated on the eastern, uh, terminus of Muskegon Lake. And so this rezoning is in alignment with that, is sensible. And I'm, I'm, because it is city-owned, I don't have the concerns of the risk that camping could not continue there if this development agreement does not move forward. Um, it would continue there as non-conforming use and it very likely would, the, this commission would very likely rezone it back to open space recreation, um, in the event this development agreement doesn't move forward. So I'm comfortable, um, in voting in favor of this particular rezoning and look forward to seeing the updated, uh, development agreement in the near future. So, final thoughts before we go to roll call. Commissioner Kilgo?
Thank you, I just, I do want to share some final thoughts since we're kind of getting into it. Um, some of the things that we've heard, um, at different public comments and online, words like lasting effect on our community, future generations, short half-life of elected officials, shady pockets line, eminent domain. Everyone is going to have an opinion on a more divisive topic. Hey, I want it versus I don't want it versus future opportunities for the city, uh, as opposed to unique qualifications that our city currently has. We might not ever all agree. We might have difference of opinion on what to do with different parts of our city. But when comments like dealt with and threats come to any of these commissioners, mayors, or city officials, A, it's against the law, B, we will not stand for it. And share your words, share your thoughts, share your opinions. But threats of violence are never, ever, ever acceptable.
Period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner German?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you to, uh, Commissioner Kilgo for, um, addressing that because, um, under the First Amendment, right, this freedom of speech, everyone has the right to voice their opinion. With this item here, um, as I said, I've seen and been in a situation like this before when I had to make a vote. And uncertainties has always been a concern of mine. Things may sound good. Um, the intent that, um, of doing the right thing vocally, it sounds good, but I would rather see it on paper and with facts. Um, I know there was some conversation of, uh, of the intentionality of how this segues into the swap. I think the commission, I mean, not the commission, I think, um, staff, city manager has been working hard on this and got the directions from, um, the commission. But also, when there's concerns and issues, we have to take a pause and not act like it's a sense of urgency. Um, and that's the reason why, you know, I hesitate to move forward on this. Um, I can't speak for everyone, but for whatever reasons, they may have concerns to vote against it or have some pause. I, I encourage you to really think before you cast your vote and make sure that all your ducks are in order, all your questions are answered. Um, because like I said, again, I, I, I've seen this with the, um, farmer's market and the promises. And you look at the old farmer's market down there, to this day, there's nothing down there. The promises to redevelop or put something down there. I don't want to see this happen to this project here, if it ever comes into fruition. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. All right, last call for final thoughts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kochen?
No.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
No.
Commissioner German?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. This will come back to us for a second read and vote. All right, where are we at? J L, bid award, park building renovations, Commissioner Keener.
Move to authorize staff to enter to a contract with fleece and vend and brink in the amount of, am I reading the right one?
L, bid award. Or park building renovations.
Sorry, excuse me. Move to authorize staff to enter into a contract with JWK in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars for park building renovations to Sheldon Park and Hart Shore Marina and Park.
Support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Keener, supported by Commissioner Kochen. Good evening, kindly introduced yourself and please report out on this item.
Yeah, hi there, Kyle Karcheski, Director of Parks and Re- Recreation for the City of Muskegon. What we have here is bid results for three park projects. Two of those are restoring a couple restrooms. Um, Hart Shore and Boat Ramp and Park restroom has been shut, um, since the high waters. And also Sheldon restroom has been shut for a while as well. Those were both master plan, or priorities that were outlined in the master planning, um, and surveys. Um, for the Harbor Master Building, we're making much-needed improvements, uh, to the, to the current building. Uh, we need to make it sealed and secure. We have security, um, concerns and we need to, it to function better to better serve our public. So Hart Shore, like I said, it was closed, um, with the high waters about four to five years ago. And I believe Sheldon was closed, um, when recr- when Leisure Services, uh, was closed in early two thousands. We also are going to make some ADA improvements so that there is an ADA restroom at Sheldon. It'll be a, a single family-type restroom. And really all these improvements speak, uh, to the heart of the capital improvement plan, which is, uh, investing in our current infrastructure and investing in our communities, in our local neighborhood parks. And as we, we see here, we did have some close bids. Uh, staff is required to follow the purchasing policy. And the purchasing policy and for what the, the guidelines we were looking for for this project, um, has us selecting JWK, which is a, a company, as stated earlier, they are from, um, Granville in the Grand Rapids area.
Thank you, Director Karcheski. Commissioner Keener?
Um, thank you for your explanation. I just, um, I really wanted to know why exactly a local bidder did not get, um, preference for this. And I, I do understand though, it's a whopping nine ta- nineteen thousand dollars difference. Um, so I get where we're coming from. I would just love to see more local and I'm wondering if, if that two percent, is that something that we just have to abide by? Um, especially when it comes to local companies that have local people that live here and spend locally.
Um, so the, the two percent is the city preference that the commission has set? Um, so that, that can be adjusted, um, or as, uh, the, uh, representative from Clifford Buck pointed out, um, the council, the commission has in the past opted to go with a local contractor on the Southern Avenue project, uh, who is outside of that two percent. So it is at the discretion of the commission. We have to follow your policy when making the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And so, um, is that something that we would be agreeable to in this circumstance? I'm, I'm just wondering what the commission feels about this award. I just, like I said, nineteen thousand dollars is a lot of money, but at the same time, it's, it's our community, it's our people. And I personally, one of the things that really irritated me when we were redoing, um, the building downtown, um, the Mercy Building, I had a business right next door and those, and they were working on that thing for over a year and a half, two years. No one ever patronized, not a restaurant down there. They were coming in from Grand Rapids, um, bringing their own lunch in. I mean, they, they don't shop down, they weren't shopping downtown or anything. And so it's like almost a slap in the face when we could offer these, um, pos- these bids to people that what we know is spent locally, that love this community just as much as we do. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keener. That was Commissioner Kochen's support then.
Um, I, thank you, Commissioner Keener for, for bringing that up. I was also going to ask about that. I, I'm not exactly sure where I stand on that idea right now because it is a substantial amount of money. I have some serious concerns about money that we are most likely be spending in the future and trying to figure out where, you know, where to cut so that we can make things happen. Um, so I'm not sure where I'm going to stand on that, but I appreciate, uh, Director Karcheski for putting the work in and getting the bids and, uh, working on renovating our local mar- marina and park. Uh, I do want to ask one other question for you, sir, though. Um, wasn't it at one point in time in an agreement with Adelaide Point that they would handle the bathroom?
No.
No, okay, I'm, am I thinking of, because I thought that they had said that they were going to.
You want to go take that?
Oh, I'm sorry. The, um, the developer got a little proactive, um, and started ordering some stuff for the bathroom without our permission. Um, trying to make it consistent with what is at AP itself. Um, but it was never part of the agreement to do the bathroom itself.
All right, okay, that's what I'm thinking of then, thank you.
That's, that's the toilet conversation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
It, it came to me after you started talking.
Okay, yeah.
That's what it was.
I think Commissioner Kochen, Commissioner Kilgo?
Oh, I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions, um, for Mr. Manager. Would, for us to change our policy, would you just have to bring it to an LPC meeting, talk about it and so on and so forth? Okay. Um, so dollars matter, we want different dollars for, I, I guess this is a good question. So this is also part of like a DB, DPW fund, is this specifically Parks and Recs money?
This is ARPA.
Well, this is ARBA dollar, okay, that's right. So, um, with ARBA dollars, if we save money, then those remaining ARBA dollars, if there's any, can be used for other things. So we do want to think about the money part of it. Um, I do have one question for staff. Do you all have a recommendation? Like, uh, have we worked with JWK before? You guys feel comfortable taking that bid, the lowest bid and moving forward with JWK?
So we have a project manager, SEH, they are right across the street here, they are in Muskegon. They're doing the project managing. So really, that's where these efficiencies show more when they're local. But the fact that we're paying someone to manage it, it's not something that will affect me as much, it could affect the total project. Um, I do know that Andrea Regler, the architect, says she has worked with Clifford Buck quite a bit and does have a good working relationship with them and hasn't worked with JWK. But I have, I did call JWK's references and they've done similar projects in parks.
Okay.
So it is a tough decision and one that.
And I, I know that, I know that, uh, I, I'm all for supporting local business, local contractors, all that good stuff. But being a business myself, I do also know the bids can be bid differently. And sometimes losing a bid can lead you to more business in the future by bidding differently the next time. So I, I, I may feel bad for the local and I don't want people to think that I don't care about local. I'm glad that we give a, a preference to city and then county and then general. Uh, and maybe we can look at maybe moving two percent to three percent, but this is at a four point seven percent difference right now. So in that mindset, I am comfortable going with JWK because dollars do matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilgo. Um, to give a little bit of historical context with regard to our, our purchase policy, um, and that preferential treatment. Um, it was in twenty twenty-one when we updated it. Before that, it was a one percent differential for city, um, based businesses. There was no county, um, preference. Um, in twenty twenty, we updated that to double, one percent to two percent. Um, Lee and Mike, our deputy city manager, was part of that, that, uh, review committee that brought forward that policy. Um, and so we doubled the one percent to two percent for city preferential and then added one percent for county preferential. Um, when this came to us with regard to Southern Avenue and what ultimately went with, um, got him blinking on the.
Tara.
Tara Contractors, yes, it's Scott Dryer, um, Tara Contractors. Um, that was the one time, and I believe the only time that I recall in this commission, deviating from the purchasing policy and the preferential treatment. Um, and as was shared at that time, um, or at least I shared, it's like, if we're going to consistently repeatedly deviate from policy with regard to preferential treatment, then we should seriously take a look at changing policy and not just deviating from policy. I don't know if you all got a, a notification, but I got a, a letter from, um, after we, we voted on that and deviated. And I thought it was the right move and I don't think it was as much of a difference. I don't think it was close to five percent, like, um, in this case, when we, when we deviated with regard to, um, uh, Southern Avenue reconstruction, um, over there with Tara. Uh, but got a, got a letter from an association of, of, of builders essentially, um, contractors who had concern of us deviating from policy and that it discourages, um, people, bu- businesses wanting to bid. Um, that you could end up having inadvertent effect of, um, limiting your pool of bids and contractors to choose from. Now, that said, I very much support local. I very much like to hear, I'm, I was very happy to hear from Mr. Lorton earlier that, um, not only is it a local union, uh, general contractor, uh, but that they are intentional in having local contractors and local employees, um, and that is significant to me. And so I would be open to considering a change to the policy where we were to give, um, you know, extra bump in preference for, um, a, 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 a union, um, operation, um, and/or an operation that demonstrates hiring, um, and employing, uh, the very large portion, you know, uh, vast majority of their, their contracts and subcontractors from within our community and getting an extra bump. That's something I'd be open to, to considering. Um, but I am, I have reservations about deviating from policy. I have reservations about deviating from policy at this time. So those are my thoughts right now. Commissioner, have you already spoken?
I already did.
I'm going to go to Vice Mayor St. Clair, she has not weighed in yet.
I have concerns about us being inconsistent and not following policy. I I think, I think we have policies for a reason and there's a lot of danger in picking favorites. And, you know, there's, stay off of Facebook, it's a terrible place. But if you do go there, you will see a lot of accusations of cronyism and backroom deals and that we're lining our pockets. And these are the sort of things that concern me that that feeds into that narrative. I would very much like to support local. I would, I would very much like us to revisit this policy and give a broader range for a local bump. I think that, I think that the the economic benefit to the community for it to be a local provider is significant enough that it makes sense to me to give them a wider range. But I would prefer to do that after we've updated the policy rather than deviating from it because I think that's a slippery slope. And, you know, people stay mad at us all the time. I'd rather not give them valid reasons to be upset. So let's put this on the LPC and move it forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor St. Clair. Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm pro-union when it comes to local contractors, businesses. I feel that the city should do all they can to support them. However, I believe in equitable and fair practices also. And in this case, JWK Construction Corporation received the bid. And I think it would be unfair if we deviated from that. Having this discussion within the work session and they was awarded the bid. But I would be open also to discuss this in a LPC meeting also to make some policy changes as well. But when we go local, we all know that it creates jobs and opportunities. We talk about the development in housing and, you know, some families can't afford to live there. Well, when you have opportunities to create jobs, you bid them out. So that's part of the problem right there. Maybe a small portion in some people's eyes, but there's an opportunity to put work, workers to work here. So I would like to see us bring this to the LPC meeting and and have more discussion on this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner German.
Yeah.
I'm going to give Commissioner German an opportunity before I do follow. Commissioner German, anything to ask or add at the time?
Sure, just add, yeah, I support us talking about this at LPC and I do appreciate Mr. Zorn coming to speak to us. And I I think that's what we wanted was local accountability. And, yeah, staff, you are doing what you have been asked to do, so I appreciate that. And I really hope we can, as a team, update that policy so we can be more favorable to our local contractors.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman. Commissioner Kochen.
Yes, Director Karchewski, I noticed that the the gentleman from Clifford Buck came here to speak tonight, but I didn't see anybody from JWK Construction. Were they invited to come tonight?
I told them that I'll be bringing it to commission this night.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And did they give any reason why they couldn't attend?
No, I, they were excited and I I told them, you know, I gave them the rundown of there's a 2%, but, you know, we do support our local businesses, so. But no, you know, I I don't, I haven't really had any many contractors here for these these park, these park improvements, especially when it's just, you know, when there's design questions. This is, you know, this is really a local architecture really, really is the one who put this whole 400-page document together. But it's truly putting in new fixtures and a couple of new roofs. So, you know, that's, that's why they didn't come because it was, you know, it was just some following the the blueprints and just putting together, just reviving some bathrooms, really.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any final thoughts?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't come because they didn't want to sit through this meeting.
Roll call please.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kochen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, next item N, Police Department Wage Increase. Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the wage increase for both patrol and command police unions to begin 2026 wage rates plus a $1 increase retroactively beginning October 1st, 2025.
All right.
All right, motion back, Commissioner German, supported by Vice Mayor St. Clair. Good evening, sir. Kind of introduce that once more and report on this item.
Good evening. Tocole's Public Safety Director. This is something I think I chatted a little bit about when I was talking about our retention bonus back in late September, that we wanted to look at what we could do to be competitive with not only our comparables, but also to our competitors that our officers have departed to go for. So are looking at the wages that our current staff or our police department is at. Just to give you a quick snapshot of that, our current starting wage for a police officer here, 2025 wage is 61,152, as opposed to our fire department starts at 66,942. So we're actually a little bit behind even our fire department here, but we did have a brand-new contract with the fire department. Comparatively, Norton Shores starts start at 62,800. Kentwood, which is one of our comparables, is 71,200. Grand Rapids, 74,400. As you move up, we're still behind the fire department and we're still behind a lot of these other departments. So one of the thoughts that I proposed to the city manager was moving us to the 26th wage now. At that point, when I started the conversation, it was closer to October, beginning of October. But now we're going to look at retroactive to October 1. But I also said, let's throw another dollar to that. That would look, get us looking at a start wage of 65,520. As you see in your wage scale, it just shows your hourly rate, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a snapshot. That would get us a little bit closer to our comparables. We're not, we're still a couple thousand away, but it's a start. It also helps us out with our one-year and our two-year officers and gets them more competitive than we are now. Probably almost our two-year officers would look at about a about a $9,000 jump. So I think that's going to be helpful, especially with our retention bonus and hopefully retaining, but also on our recruitment end, when we start having our wages show that we are comparable to not only our comparable communities like in Norton Shores or, I'm sorry, Kentwood, but also to our competitors.
Thank you, Director Kozel. Commissioner German?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief Kozel, for bringing that to the commissioner's attention. First of all, I'd like to commend the fire department's employees and police officers for the work that they do, putting their lives on the line for the community. It's a hard job and can be stressful. And sometimes pay could also have a part on that when you're not being paid more money and things are going up and cost of living. Just wish that it was more that we could do. But being, you know, a supporter of the police department and fire department here, pro-union, I definitely support this and hope that this helped retain our officers and firefighters as well and help with the recruitment also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner German. Vice Mayor St. Clair?
I agree. I think that it's a well-known fact that we have a bunch of vacancies on our department that are funded and budgeted for but not filled because we don't have people who want to work in them. I don't, I don't think it's that people don't want to work in Muskegon. I think it's that we don't pay them enough. And we have the, we have the ability to rectify that a little, and I think this is a good start, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor St. Clair. Commissioner Kilgore?
Thank you. Chief, you know how much money I made when I was a sheriff's deputy about 15 years ago?
Seventeen dollars an hour.
Twelve dollars and 50 cents. Yeah, that's why I didn't stay in law enforcement. I would encourage young folks, men and women, young men and young women, to come check out the city of Muskegon's police department. I mean, recruitment at 25, starting wages at $30 an hour, a great career with some really great officers, great leadership. I definitely would just encourage some younger people who want to start a career to come check out the Muskegon Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kilgore. Commissioner, is there anything else to ask or add? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore?
Yes.
Commissioner Keener?
Indeed, yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kochen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes our consent agenda. All right, we don't have any new business. We have any other business? I would just like to give appreciation and celebration to our clerk's office for operating another excellent election, doing it very, very well. And giving us the, you know, sharing the results, you know, as soon as you got them was appreciative and helpful. So thank you. And, yeah, I had conversations with some of the workers at the different polling places, just checking in with them during, you know, and early voting here. And people said they were treated well and they appreciate working on the the elections and are happy to do what they do. And so, thank you. And thank you to your team. Commissioners, anything else for any other business? Commissioner German?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to echo that as well, Mayor Johnson. And you always do an excellent job, you and your team, we greatly appreciate it. But also, I'd like to extend to thank you and the congratulations to each and every one of you who ran for office. It's not easy getting reelected. It it can be a struggle. So I welcome you back and congratulations on each and every candidate that ran and won the race.
Thank you, Commissioner German. Vice Manager?
Yep, just one quick thing of, this is just an FYI. We found out on Thursday that we can't get pennies anymore. They stopped being minted in May from an executive order back in February. So we're working on a pilot program on rounding. And then we'll probably see how that works and then come back to you guys for a policy update. But if you hear from your constituents that we don't have pennies or about probably two weeks out from not having pennies, so we'll be asking for exact change rounding where we can. On utility bills, it's not that big of a deal, we can credit it to their next month, things like that. Taxes are going to be a little bit of a different story, but we're working through on how that will work and working with the communications department and then all the departments that take coin in the city to make sure that we're being consistent. So if you do hear questions, yes, that's true. Unfortunately, there's not really anything we can do about it, so.
Excellent. Speaking of payment, our kiosk is live.
Yes.
Out in the atrium from the, which previously known as the Walnut Street entrance. But it's in the, yeah, the, going into the treasurer's office entrance, the the water department billing entrance, there's a kiosk there in the atrium that you can pay your water bill as well as your DT gas bill right there. And they'll accept check, cash, and card. Yes. Commissioner Kilgore, then Commissioner Kochen.
Thank you. I would like to check with council. Going into this closed session, and we did hear from the caller earlier, this is not something that we can speak about in open session?
I would prefer you not. It is the, it is not litigation that we're going to talk, well.
Can we reserve this when we get to the motion?
Oh, sure.
If you don't mind?
No problem.
Because I was planning on bringing it up under, once we got to the motion.
No problem.
So any other business? Sorry. It's okay. Commissioner Kochen?
Yes, I know there are a lot of people out there who are struggling to be able to get food right now. And I just wanted to let people know that there is going to be an event hosted by one of our local businesses in conjunction with an organization out of Grand Rapids. And they'll be handing out free food at the Paradise Event Center at 465 West Broadway in Muskegon Heights on November 15th, that's Saturday, and starting at noon. So it looks like it's going to be a really delicious Italian meal. So if you're hungry and you're struggling, come on out.
Thank you, Commissioner Kochen. Also a reminder that we do have the Love Cafe down on Western Avenue. The fall menu is launching tomorrow. I'm hopeful that it includes the Chef Eric's Chicken and Dumplings, so good. I hope it includes the Chicken and Dumplings. But Love Cafe, I'm very love incorporated, love in the name of Christ. That is available for a pay-as-you-can diner. And so if you're able to to pay what you normally would, do so. If you can pay extra, do so to help folks that can't pay for that. But also a reminder that our farmer's market is a participant in the Double Up Food Bucks program. And so if you do happen to have EBT, and I know that that EBT has not been allotted for most people this month, there were 200,000 people in Michigan that did get allotment for their EBT. There's still like a million plus that did not get them from November. The current federal administration is trying to rescind the money that was given to this 200 households, unfortunately, and very frustratingly so. However, if you do have EBT dollars left on your bridge card, you can come down to the farmer's market any market day, that's Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and you can get an extra $20. So you get $20 matched to be used for fresh fruit and vegetables and now also frozen fruits and vegetables through, those restrictions were lifted through the end of this year. You can get frozen fruits and vegetables without added salt, fat, or sugar. Also, bonus bucks. You can get $40 in bonus bucks and while supplies last. We got our allotment, we've been handing them out at the farmer's market. It's being promoted on radio stations and elsewhere in our community. We had a good number of people come through on Saturday as well as last Thursday, but quite a few more people on Saturday. But just want to make sure that we all know so we can share with our communities and neighbors as well as putting it out there on television and and Facebook and YouTube to let everyone know that there are $40. If you have EBT or bridge card, you can get $40 in bonus bucks at the farmer's market. And also look online for other qualifying participating establishments. So, thank you. And then anything else for any other business? Nope? Okay, so now we have a general public comment. Then we'll go to the motion and we'll have that discussion that Commissioner Kilgore was initiating. So this is general public comment time. You are the only last member of the public with us, Mr. Ewing. Do you wish to give a comment?
No, no, we're fine.
All right. We are going to go to the phones now. That is 231-724-6721. This is general public comment time. This is an opportunity for folks to call in and give up to three minutes of remarks to speak directly to the city commission. This isn't a time for Q and A or back and forth. If that is so desired, we can arrange that to happen separately. When you're calling in, please turn on any audio in the background, state your name. And if you are a city Muskegon resident, which neighborhood you're calling from. And if you're not a city Muskegon resident, which other township, village, or city you may be calling from.
Okay.
We got someone?
Ryan McCarthy.
Hello, Mr. McCarthy, joining us from Lakeside. You have up to three minutes for your remarks.
So after last week's election, I've seen numerous comments on social media and elsewhere dismissing Muskegon voters as stupid, literate, ignorant, for voting simultaneously to enact term limits while re-electing a mayor who would be rendered ineligible by those very limits. These comments are short-sighted and fail to consider the intelligent, deliberate choices made by our voters. Let's address the question at hand. How could voters approve term limits by a decisive majority while also electing a mayor who is now ineligible to serve? The answer's simple. We approached this ballot as though it offered ranked choice voting, a system that allows voters to rank preferences so their second choice can still count if their first choice doesn't prevail. In this case, a majority of Muskegon voters' first priority was to enact term limits. An overwhelming majority of thoughtful, literate, civic-minded residents deliberately chose to cap our elected officials' power at a generous 12 years, fully aware of the limit this would place on Mayor Johnson and other officials who have served. Those who mock us for electing a now ineligible mayor failed to grasp a fundamental truth. Had the term limit amendment failed, those who voted. Had the term limit amendment failed, those who voted in favor of it still get to make a choice for mayor. This explains the near equal support for term limits and for Mayor Johnson. If term limits prevail, we limit Mayor Johnson's tenure to elect fresh leadership in a special election. If term limits fail, we are still entitled to choose Mayor Johnson as our preference over candidate Bob Garrettson. At this point, our community would benefit from clear communication. The Home Rule City Act ensures that current terms, such as the one Mayor Johnson and Commissioner German are serving, cannot be shortened by our newly enacted charter amendment. Commissioner German will only be limited after completing the two years remaining on his current term. Mayor Johnson's current term expires on December 31st of this year, and the HRCA only protects terms that are currently held. It does not confer rights to any future term that has yet to begin. I'd like to hear the city attorney's opinion on case law that was established via Warren City Council versus Sonia Boffa in 2023. Understanding this precedent may convince Mayor Johnson to step aside at the expiration of his current term and support a special election for a mayor that is not term limited. Commissioners, I hope you have not convinced yourselves that nearly 3,300 of your neighbors are stupid and did not understand the consequences of their affirmative votes for term limits. Going forward, let's have this conversation now be open so our community can understand the path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Appreciate your phone in.
We have Darlene DeHudy.
All right, Darlene DeHudy calling in from the city of Norton Shores. You have up to three minutes to provide your remarks.
Hi, um, I would like to say that in the Imagine Muskegon 2017 Plan, um, Fisherman's Landing was not considered in the port development area. And I hope people realize that. Um, repeatedly we hear that this has been discussed for 30 years, but not always supportive of taking over Fisherman's Landing. Fisherman's Landing was in the Central Waterfront Transition Vision Plan where it was wanted to be connected to Jackson Hill because that's Jackson Hill's Neighborhood Park. The other, um, the Port Innovation District was much further north, even beyond the Wetland District. So that is, that's in the, um, vision plan. It's on page 49. If, if you want to look it up, it's online. Also, in the Muskegon Lake Vision 2020 Plan, the West Michigan Regional Shoreline Commission, um, 73% of the forum participants disagreed or strongly disagreed that additional commercial point of port development on Muskegon Lake would have a positive effect on natural resources. 46% of the forum participants disagreed or strongly disagreed that additional commercial port development on Muskegon Lake would affect recreation positively. So, not always were people in favor, as they are not now, of Mart Doc taking over Fisherman's Landing. And that is basically what I wanted to convey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeHudy. Appreciate your phone in.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right. We'll give you a few more moments for phone-in comments. All right. Does not sound like we have any more takers for phone-in comments. That brings us to consideration of a motion for, uh, going into closed session, uh, for discussion of attorney client privilege. Uh, is there someone, Vice Mayor St. Clair?
I move to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion and disclosure by state or federal statute being in attorney-client communication.
The motion by Vice Mayor St. Clair, supported by Commissioner Keener. Um, we know we have a question from Commissioner Kilgo. Before I go to him though, I want to give an opportunity to Vice Mayor St. Clair or Commissioner Keener to ask or share anything. Okay. Commissioner Kilgo, you had a question earlier?
Yes, um, and my question for council is, um, is just that I, I personally, I don't want to go into closed session if it's something that's not eligible to go into closed session.
It is eligible to go into closed session. There's, the legal advice over the phone was interesting, but, and he is correct, there is a provision that says you can go into closed session to discuss with your attorney pending litigation under certain circumstances. That's not what we're doing. We're going into consider, for you to consider, a legal opinion that we've rendered that indicates where we think there's some issues, problems and recommendations how to move forward. I do not expect that you're going to take action out here afterwards. It is, uh, for you to know what is going to happen so that you don't get surprised on Wednesday afternoon or Sunday at church or Friday at the bar.
For informational purposes and then, um, if we do choose to take any kind of action as a result of the conversation, that would, the expectation is that would be at a future public commission meeting, not something that would be taken right after this.
I would not expect it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Couldn't happen, but that's not the expectation or the recommendation. Okay. Um, then before we go to vote, I do just want to clarify because that, speaking of, you know, legal opinion being rendered over the phone, it was mentioned that in the instance of vacancy, there'd be a special election. That's not true. Um, our city charter does not, um, bring it to a special election. So in the event that, um, I am not to be able to be sworn in or for whatever reason I become incapacitated or I'm no longer in this role, does not automatically go to the vice mayor, um, the city commission chooses its mayor, whether it's from the city commission itself or from someone in the community. And in the event that it's pulled, that the city commission chooses to fill the vacancy with a member of the commission, then subsequently that commission's position needs to be filled, um, with a member of the community. That's what happened in 2012, um, with, um, when Mayor Wilmington stepped down, Vice Mayor Garn at the time, who was an at-large commissioner, was appointed mayor by the commission and then the commission had a process to solicit applications or interest, um, from the community as to folks that wanted to serve on the city commission. The city commission did interviews and then ultimately appointed, uh, Leah Markowski to serve, uh, the remainder of that term as an at-large commissioner. So I just want to provide some clarification there that it would not go to a special election. Also, uh, Mr., the, the gentleman on the phone did mention, um, a ranked choice and, and what was voted first. And I would just like to note that, uh, the top vote getting, um, the top thing that, the thing that got the most votes on that ballot November 4th was myself, with 63% of the vote, not, um, term limits. So.
Do you have a quick question? So, so I, I pulled up the open meetings handbook to refresh my memories on that. Is there a reason why, like, it's talking about how if it would be financially detrimental to the city, um...
That's litigation.
Right.
Or, or other issues, but not, uh, I'm sorry.
I'm assuming this is in regard to like litigation or potential future litigation. So is there a reason why we would not have this out in the open?
Because I would not be forthcoming with full and complete advice to you if I knew that, uh, it was going to be broadcast and was available to everyone else. I cannot give legal advice to you in a situation where everybody hears my advice. I'm not going to be able to give you a full and complete, uh, recitation. I further would caution you that if you choose to do that anyways, please don't ask any questions and please don't comment. I will absolutely eliminate the public discourse. That would be my recommendation for the same reason.
And you know we're going to be hard-pressed to not ask questions or give comment.
I have all of the questions. I have, I have all of the questions.
Unless there's anything else, um, from the commission?
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Will we be potentially able to be sued by an individual who feels that we are violating the Open Meetings Act if we go into closed session?
Could you be sued?
Yes, every day.
For anything. It doesn't mean they're standing. But do you feel like they have standing?
No.
That was going to be my question also, about the open meeting in this act. So, so city council, I mean, um, yeah, legal council, you feel comfortable?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's under the advice of council that we are considering this motion. All right. Roll call on the motion to go into closed session for the recent state of Vice Mayor St. Clair.
Commissioner Kilgo?
Yes.
Monsieur Keener?
Yes.
Monsieur German?
Yes.
Monsieur Gorman?
Yes.
Monsieur Cochran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.